It is four o'clock, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We are gathered for the Planning and Zoning Meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I gotta be sure to turn the chair around.
Thank you very much.
(laughing)
I'd like to do roll call first. Mr. Limbach? Thank you. Mr. Montgomery?
I'm present.
Mr. Watkins?
Present.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Vickett?
Present.
Mr. Marzky?
Present.
Mr. Saunders?
Present.
Chair Dupuis is present. We have eight members in the quorum. Do we have the meeting? The meeting slides? Thank you. Welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. The ground rules are: Please turn off your cellphones or silence the ringers. Also, please be polite to other stakeholders. No applause, no booing, no cheering. If you are attending in person and wish to speak, fill out a speaker information form and give it to the planning staff. Forms are on the table next to the door. The commission chair will call you at the appropriate time. If you are attending online and wish to speak, raise your hand in the team's chat and provide your name, address, and agenda item number you would like to address. The chair will call you at the appropriate time. Please mute your microphone until you are called. In-person speakers must come to the podium when called by the commission chair. Use the microphone to capture your comments. Each elected county supervisor appoints three commissioners to staggered four-year terms. Up to three commissioners are from cities. At least six commissioners are from unincorporated areas. A commissioner's service is pro bono. A quorum is five commissioners. Special use dockets are approved by this commission. A majority vote passes a motion. A tie vote triggers a rehearing at the next meeting. Appeals of special use decisions are heard by the Board of Supervisors. Appeal procedures can be found on the county's website. For additional assistance, contact Development Services. For other docket decisions than special use, result in a recommendation forwarded by the commission to the Board of Supervisors. A majority vote passes a motion, a tie vote fails. To voice an opinion regarding a recommendation, you may attend the Board of Supervisors' public hearing. We observe the following time limits. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, call to public, ten minutes for applicant statement, three minutes for supporters or those opposed, which can be adjusted by the chair, and five minutes for applicant rebuttals. Thank you. Now is the time to approve the previous month's minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, can I get a motion for approval?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Watkins?
I move that we approve last month's minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Limbach, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye, approve.
Chair approves. Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Vickett?
Aye.
And Mr. Marzky?
Asks for a second.
Thank you. And Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Speaking of members, do we have Mr. Embrees here? Mr. Embrees, are you with us? No? Thank you very much. I wanted to introduce our next month's new member. This is a time for call to public pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.01H. This is an opportunity for the public to comment. Individuals are invited to address the commission on any issue within the commission's jurisdiction, but since the commissioners may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda, commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Do we have any speakers online? Hearing none, I have no forms from the audience, so we will move on to the public hearing Our first item is docket SUB 25-02.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we remove items one, two, and three from the table.
We can remove three items from the table at a time?
Okay.
That sounds great. All right. Can I get a second? Mr. Marzky, you seconded?
Second.
All right. Let's vote through. Well done, Nathan. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Vickett?
Aye.
Mr. Marzky?
Aye.
And Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have the next three items removed from the table. Docket SUB 25-02, being back on the table, has requested again to be tabled until October eighth. Can I get a motion to do so?
So am I.
Thank you, Mr. Marzky, second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, this docket is tabled until March eighth. I'm sorry, March, we're getting March, October eighth. The next item is docket SU 25-16, the Allen Lane billboard. The applicant is Summit Locations. Is Taylor Baumgartner in the audience?
My name is Paul Bastine. I'm with Summit Locations.
Okay, Paul, we'll call you in just a moment, okay?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Thank you very much. Mr. Taylor, your report?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for docket SU 25-16, a special use authorization request to allow a billboard.
Get my paperwork in order here. I need a motion to approve docket SU 25-16.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Marzky?
I move to approve docket 25-16 with conditions of approval recommended by staff. Factors in favor, approve constituting findings of fact.
Thank you. I think it's more expedient to take a voice vote. Does anyone object?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant is Summit Locations LLC. The property is located at the northeast corner of Highway ninety and Allen Lane. It is addressed as ten Allen Lane in Wachukah City. It tax parcel one zero six one six zero three zero Bravo. Property total is about ten acres. This property is owned general business and is designated by the plan for enterprise uses. Growth area is category B. There is an existing self-storage facility on the property that dates back to approximately two thousand and two. Proposed use is a billboard. Again, the property is located in the vicinity of Highway ninety and Highway eighty-two in Netwahtstone, approximately one and a half miles north of that junction. Again, the property is owned general business within existing many storage facilities. The nearest residential properties are approximately three hundred and thirty feet to the south. The zoning regulations identify specific standards for signs, including billboards. Billboards in general business district as well as rural and industrial districts require special use approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. There is a caveat within the provision. I don't really want to read it all the way through, but special uses are permissible if we have an approved special use in these districts, provided that the maximum aggregate sign area of two square feet per linear foot of street frontage is not exceeded. The code also specifically identifies compliance with the development standards in order to approve a special use, although waivers are always an option for an applicant to request. The original application that was scheduled for the August meeting had three items of concern to staff. One is the maximum height for billboards is thirty-five feet. The proposed was forty-five feet in height. Number two, the minimum distance from any site boundary is one hundred feet, and the original application was significantly less than that. Those two have been modified since with a revised site plan and elevations, which we'll see later in the presentation. So those are no longer on the table as requested waivers. Additionally, we had a one hundred watt LED illumination proposal for this sign. Apparently, that was an error. That was not intended for this particular project. So outside lighting, no illumination is proposed either. So we're not really concerned about any uplighting. So based on the site plan, the applicants have revised it to meet the hundred-foot setback from all other structures from the edge of right-of-way and all property lines. And per the elevation, the total sign height is thirty feet, excuse me, thirty-five feet as opposed to forty-five feet. And there is no illumination depicted on the elevation. There's a few drone images. Did want to maybe comment a little bit about the property frontage of Highway ninety is about nine hundred and thirty-seven feet. A sign area of up to eight hundred and seventy-four square feet would be allowed per the code. What is being proposed is twelve hundred square feet, which is four panels consisting of approximately three hundred square feet apiece. Again, the additional proposal also showed LED lighting with forty-five feet height and less than one hundred foot setback from Highway ninety, and those are no longer in play. The site plan and elevations comply with the zoning regulations. A couple of drone images. This would be viewing to the north. This is viewing to the southeast. An image to the south, showing the residential development to the right of the screen, which would be, this would be viewing east, excuse me, with the residential development to the south. And one last image, this would be viewing to the west. Section two point four eight of the zoning regs identifies ten factors to evaluate special use requests. In this particular case, five factors apply. Among the factors in favor, that there are five factors that do not apply, is this a billboard. It's not an actual commercial development or anything similar. The requests will comply with the applicable factors with conditions. We did receive support from a nearby property owner. Factors not in favor, we did receive opposition from nearby property owners. And obviously, a concern is the visual impacts on established residential properties to the south. The applicants mailed letters as required by the zoning regulations on twelve June, and staff executed the public notification process per the zoning regulations also. We mailed seventy-two notices, receiving three responses within the notification area, two in opposition, and one in favor. Two of the two red squares beneath a subject property are under common ownership. That's the same property owner. We also received one response in favor from a nearby resident who was not the owner but a tenant, and we received an additional response in favor from a property owner outside the notification area. So in respect, we received four responses. Three, excuse me, two were in opposition, one was in favor. And Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket 25-16, a special use authorization request to allow a billboard. We're available for the commission's questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Now is the time for the applicant's statement. Please state your name and address, sir, before you begin. You have ten minutes.
Ten minutes, okay. Thank you. My first name's Paul, last name Bastine. I'm the regional real estate manager for Summit Locations. My address is four two seven Arbor Station Drive. That's Long Beach, Mississippi, three nine five six zero. So I came here a long way. First of all, I appreciate you welcoming Summit Locations into this meeting this afternoon. It was explained very well what we're trying to do, is we're a billboard company. And what we do is we put very nice single-monopole billboards up, and all we're trying to do is advertise local economy. The one thing we don't do, we do not advertise beer, wine, liquor, alcohol. None of that's on our billboards. We don't do strip clubs. I don't know if there's strip clubs here, but there are. We don't do it. We don't do anything that's immoral. And when I say that, we have a landowner that we answer to and ourselves, so we're going to make sure that we do the right thing. What we're trying to do is advertise local economy, small antique shops, restaurants, anything that's going to go, you know, that follows the road. And we might do some national ads, Coca-Cola, Pepsi, might do some McDonald's, that kind of stuff. It's a pretty simple process. Takes us two days to build the billboard. With no lighting or illumination, that'll be good, because I think one of the oppositions was about the illumination, and we'll have no illumination back towards the residential, and I think it's far enough back. We are going to take some of the vegetation out, and we will replenish it per the code. So it's not a complicated thing, and we're in sixteen states right now, so we're trying to build up to, we're going to get to about twenty, twenty-two states. When I started working for Summit, back in twenty seventeen, we were in two states, and now we're in sixteen, in Arizona. We're not going to build a ton of stuff there, but we're going to build some good inventory that will help, you know, the progress of our company. And I think the benefit for us is that we're going into a community, and we don't advertise bad stuff. We advertise people. We did some marketing research, and there are businesses out there that do appreciate a billboard to advertise their business, a directional, to get to, you know, go there and eat and do whatever. We do colleges. We even do stuff for the community from the standpoint of voting and that kind of stuff. So, yeah, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you. We may call you back. This is the public hearing portion. This is the time for comments from other persons. I do have one request to speak from Stephen Hassan. Name and address, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commission members. For the record, Stephen Hassan, two twenty-one East Allen Lane. I live just right down from this intersection. And I had come in support of this billboard, and I'm disappointed now to hear that illumination has been set aside. This is a very dark intersection. I've lived there for seven years, and it's pitch black, and neither ADOT nor the county has seen a fit to illuminate it so as to minimize traffic conflict. And I'm also past chair of the Whetstone Fire District, which is right down. And one of the biggest concerns that we had at the fire district was lack of illumination. And so when I heard that this billboard was going to have illumination, then certainly that became a remedy to address the conflict that otherwise exists, and especially as traffic is going faster and faster, and you have more and more people living on Allen Lane, and having to negotiate out and across that intersection. So I would ask that consideration be given to this special use permit to allow illumination if the applicant is okay with that, and also if the county planning staff is okay with it. And that concludes my testimony. I'm glad to answer any questions you might have. I might note, I am by profession a land use planner, a member of American Institute Certified Planners, and have been planning director in places like Phoenix. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone online that wishes to speak on this docket? Hearing none? It's the applicant's time to make a response. Do you have anything further to say, sir?
In regards to illumination, what's nice about putting a billboard up is, let's say in two, three years, we decide to come back and ask for illumination, we might get that. So we can always put illumination on it. We always build it, usually not ready for it, because it is an expense, but in some cases, we do build them that has the electrical to it already, so we could do it. So that, you know, it's a long-term lease agreement, so we have time to put illumination up on it if it's approved.
Thank you, sir. The public hearing is now closed. This is the time for commission discussion. Do you have any questions of the applicant or staff? Anyone?
Asking for questions, man?
Yes, sir.
I would, if we could get the actual location of the proposed billboard up there. How can I get this, this thing to work at all today? So I did review this at home, I would.
Does that help, Mr. Montgomery?
Yes, there we go. Thank you. That's where it's supposed to go. And are we sticking? I'm sorry, I don't have, I don't have this access to reading it. To the hundred-foot setback is agreed to?
They've already.
Okay. And also the thirty-five-foot height?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Montgomery, the applicants have revised their site plan and supplemental documents to comply with the thirty-five-foot height and one hundred foot setback requirement.
It's a win.
All right, anything else?
Everybody gets what they want.
Whoever's online, could you please mute yourself? Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, your recommendation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends approval of docket SU 25-16 to allow a billboard, subject to the following conditions. Billboard shall comply with applicable zoning regulation development standards, including section two point five four signs, and maintain a minimum of one hundred feet from all property lines and other structures, and not exceed a total height of thirty-five feet. Illumination is prohibited. Now, with that last sentence, zoning regulations do allow illumination for billboards. They just have to comply with the lighting requirements, which would be downlit, limitations on lumens, and fully shielded. If the commission is inclined to remove that, we understand, based on the applicant's statement. So condition number two would be all vegetation cleared for the billboard shall be replenished, which the applicant has addressed. And the relating, the remaining standard conditions are still in effect. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I think it would be expedient to remove that short sentence. Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we eliminate that last, those last three words on that board.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Hearing ayes, we move forward to... How do we amend the motion? This always floors me. We're going to vote for the amended motion. That's already on the floor, I believe. All right. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Vickett?
Aye.
Mr. Marzky?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Congratulations. This passes. An individual disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors within fifteen days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk or at cochiez dot az dot gov. Thank you very much. All right, let's do this again. SU twenty-five dash seventeen, the Pine Street billboard. Mr. Bastine is present. This item has been taken off the table. So SU twenty-five dash seventeen is open for discussion and the public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the staff presentation for docket SU twenty-five seventeen, a special use authorization request to allow a billboard.
Make a new motion, please. Can I get that?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Watkins?
I move to approve docket SU twenty-five dash seventeen with conditions of approval recommended by staff. The factors in favor of approval constitute the findings of fact.
Second?
I'll second it.
We had Mr. Marzky first. Thank you, Ms. Vickett.
He bit me.
All in, well, we'll vote at the end. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant is Summit Locations LLC. The property is located at Highway ninety and Pine Street in Wachukah City. Tax parcel one zero six one five zero one three Charlie. Property total is about thirteen acres, and is owned general business, designated by the comprehensive plan as enterprise and within growth area B. The property is undeveloped, and the proposed special use would allow a billboard. Property is located along Highway ninety, approximately one half mile south of Highway eighty-two, and approximately two miles south of the location of the previous docket. Again, this property is owned GB and is undeveloped. Nearest residential properties are approximately one hundred and fifty-five feet to the north. Wanted to mention the plan a little bit. The Babakamari Plan addresses illumination specifically because of the presence of the Fort Wachukah's east range, the Hubbard Assault Strip Encroachment Area, which is approximately one mile to the east. Because of the presence of that military training facility, the plan includes language that encourages light pollution control measures and limitations on outdoor lighting to reduce potential impacts on military training at that installation. Again, this is the same graphic. So billboards do require special use in rural general business as well as the industrial districts. In this case, based on the applicant's revised site plan and elevations, the property, excuse me, the billboard would meet most development standards. In subsequent conversation with the applicant right before the meeting, I was provided with an incorrect site plan that showed a sub-one-hundred-foot property line setback. The applicant has assured us that those minimum distances will be met. So there is no waiver for a substandard setback for this application. Just to note, and this, the site plan shows the proposed location of the billboard approximately twelve feet from the south property line. Again, the applicant is attesting that this will be a minimum of one hundred feet. Property frontage along Highway ninety is seven hundred and twenty square feet. This would allow a sign area of up to one thousand four hundred and forty square feet. Twelve hundred square feet is proposed, which consists of four panels of three hundred square feet apiece. The original proposal again showed LED lighting, forty-five feet in height, and less than one hundred foot setbacks. The revised site plans and elevation show thirty-five feet in height, per the applicant's assurance, a minimum of one hundred foot setback and no lighting. And this is also represented on a very similar graphic to the previous docket. Three hundred foot panels, three hundred square foot panels, of which there are four, with a total height of thirty-five feet. A few drone images. This would be viewing to the northwest, to the north, and to the southeast. Section two point four eight of the zoning regulations identifies ten factors to evaluate special use requests. Five factors apply to this application. Some of the factors in favor include the five factors do not apply. The remaining factors comply with conditions. Staff did receive support from a nearby property owner. Factors not in favor, staff also received opposition from nearby property owners. The visual impacts on established residential properties are a concern, and staff is generally not supportive of development standard waivers, which again, this is no longer a factor not in favor based on the applicant's assurance. The applicant participated in the public notification program on June twelfth, mailing out letters, and staff executed the requirements for public notice out of the zoning regulations. Staff mailed fifty-nine notices, receiving one response in favor, and four responding four responses in opposition. And Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket 25-17, a special use authorization to allow a billboard. We're available for the commission's questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This is the time for the applicant's statement.
You want me to go through my name and all that?
Please.
Yeah, Paul Bastine, regional real estate manager with Summit Locations. Address- Address four-two-seven Arbor Station Drive, uh, Long Beach, Mississippi, three-nine-five-six-zero. Um, again, this is a similar, uh, billboard that we just had approved. A single monotop billboard. I went out this morning, actually, and we originally had it marked, um, closer to the road. I went to this morning and I did mark it a hundred feet away. So, we are, uh, in compliance, one-hundred percent. Again, there's going to be no illumination on the billboard. Uh, again, we will not advertise any type of beer, wine, liquor, alcohol, anything like that. And I think that's very important, um, to note, and that will never change. Um, and once again, we're just trying to reach out to the local people, maybe do some national ads, and, uh, you know, I, I think it'd be a nice-looking billboard. There, there's other billboards in the area. You know, I, I drive them and saw them for the first time. Our billboards will be the best-looking billboards there. They'll last forever, um, just a single monotop. And, uh, yeah, I think it'll be really good. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bastine. The public portion is now open. I have no speaker request forms. Is there anyone online? Hearing none? Mr. Bastine, will you waive your right to respond? Thank you. Public hearing is closed. This is the time for commission discussion or questions. Are there any?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Watkins?
I guess I should ask this during the last one, too. Do you have a picture of, or a rendering of what these billboards would look like?
I could provide you that. Um, did Taylor send one over?
We did not receive any.
Well, if you went to the drawings, can you go to the drawings? I'm not an engineer, but you can see it's a single monotop on the left. And with the two tops, uh, ten-by-thirty structure, uh, billboards. Uh, we go down, I think, twelve. Uh, we go ten-by-ten, put twelve yards of concrete in it. But I would be glad to provide a rendering. I usually do that. Sometimes, i-if it was ahead of time, I for sure would have done that. Cause it's a good, a good question.
Yeah, okay, that's okay.
It is.
Um, by this drawing, it looks like it's two billboards?
No, it's just one.
Just one?
Just one with, uh, it'll have, uh, back-to-back ten-by-thirty faces on each side, so traffic... Does ninety go north-south? Yeah, so you'd see faces on the north face and the south face.
Okay. One last question. Do you use, uh, tarp's?
Yeah, they're gonna be, they're gonna be vinyls. Yeah, we call them vinyl. In the old days, that, believe it or not, they used to go up there and draw on them. So, these are vinyls. They come in, uh, we usually sell, uh, year-to-two-year contracts, so uh, we'll be in there two to three times, four times a year, and they change out the tarp's, uh, change out the vinyls. Yeah.
We call them tarp's because we buy it from you guys.
Yeah, and if you, I'll do you. So, if you, you know, if you get, you, you want my number, if we take them down, I'll be glad to provide them for you. Cause all we do is recycle them.
Sure.
Sure.
That's all.
Mr. Bastine, I have a question. What is the access, then, to the billboard that you'll be doing?
On this one here? Uh, okay, so I just went there today, so, um, so I'm going down ninety, took a... Okay, is that Pine Street? Took a right at Pine Street, and there's a gate right there.
Toward Elder?
Where Pine Street is. And I headed this, I just, I have a rental car, so I didn't drive all the way back there. I walked.
Cause I was out there in my Jeep and couldn't figure out a way to get in there.
Well, I, I drove about a hundred feet, and I figured I don't have insurance on my rental, so I, I walked.
Right.
I'll be honest, but what our guy, we'll have heavy equipment. Our guys will figure out a way ahead of time. That's what they're supposed to do without messing things up, but really, it's, it just looked like junk vegetation to me. Same with the other spot that I went to. The other spot, um... I'm trying to think where I came through on that side. I came through on the storage facility side, but I walked. Yeah. But we won't walk when we build it.
All right, so you will be building access?
No.
No?
What's that?
You will be building some access.
Oh, the access we'll take from here. Yeah, we'll just be going through off Pine Street, and we get with our landowners ahead of time to make sure what's best.
Okay.
So, we don't, uh, we can't go off the right way. That's against the law, first of all.
That's right.
Um, and if you did try to get on the right way, there's a big dip. Wouldn't be able to make it.
Okay, just curious. Thank you. Anything else?
I'll just comment quickly.
Mr. Montgomery?
Um, I, I too would have liked to seen a rendition of it, some kind of picture or image, since that's what it's all about, is image. But the drawings are very good in detail. And so, I got a pretty, pretty good idea from that. And I would probably agree with you. There are other billboards the length of Highway ninety up to Benson that may not be thought of as substantial. This thing is substantial, and it will be there for far more.
Over the last.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Taylor, your recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This, based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends approval of docket SU twenty-five seventeen to allow a billboard subject to the following conditions. Billboard shall comply with applicable zoning regulation development standards, including section two-point-five-four, excuse me, two-point-five-four signs, and maintain a minimum of one-hundred feet from all property lines and other structures and not exceed a total height of thirty-five feet. Illumination is prohibited. Number two, all vegetation cleared for the billboard shall be replenished. Uh, standard conditions will still remain in effect and apply to this application if approved. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Does someone want to make a motion to remove the illumination prohibition?
Some move. Yeah, they have.
In a second. Thank you, Mr. Marzky. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. So, the motion is now amended to not restrict illumination. Uh, this motion is on the floor. I'd like to call for the vote. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye, to approve.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Marzky?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is unanimous. This docket has been approved. Congratulations. Any individual disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the board within fifteen days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk at the office or online at cochiez dot az dot gov. Next is docket RZ twenty-five dash twelve. Sun sites number two, Windsor Street. Paul Prince. Is Mr. Prince online?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm here.
Can I get a motion to approve RZ twenty-five dash twelve?
Don't move.
Let's read the motion, Mr. Marzky.
You wanna read it?
Yeah.
I move to recommend approval of docket RZ twenty-five twelve to the Board of Supervisors without special conditions, rezoning tax parcel one-one-seven zero-six, zero-six-three through the, through zero-six-seven and one-one-seven zero-six, zero-seven-four through zero-seven-eight from SR forty-three to SR one-forty-seven. Factors of approval constitute the findings of fact.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Taylor, your director's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is staff presentation for docket RZ twenty-five twelve. An applicant initiated request to rezon property from SR forty-three to SR one-seventy-four. The applicant is Paul Prince. The property is located in Sun Sites number two. Um, tax parcels one-one-seven zero-six, zero-six-three through zero-six-seven and one-one-seven zero-six, zero-seven-four through zero-seven-eight. Car zoning is SR forty-three. The request is SR one-seventy-four. The comprehensive plan designations are rural. Uh, the existing use of the property, there is a recreational vehicle on site with some accessory structures. Um, the proposed use is to develop the property for residential use in accordance with the county's owner builder program, which would include a single-family residence as well as a barn. Property is located, again, in Sun Sites number two, approximately five miles west of Highway one-ninety-one. Uh, the applicant requests downzoning these parcels to participate in the owner builder program. Sun Sites was planted back in the nineteen-sixties. About twenty-five rezones, um, have occurred since two thousand and two, either to SR one-seventy-four or RU four. Um, SR one-seventy-four exists to the west of this property along Cochise Stronghold. Um, the commission probably will recognize these parcels from a previous docket where the applicant requested RU four to have some additional flexibility and accessory structure standards. Um, I do recall distinctly, um, Commissioner Watkins, as well as the chair and other commissioners, as well as some of the members of our Board of Supervisors asking, or directing staff, to find a good compromise with which to approach the accessory structure issue without leaving the only option to RU four. So, the applicant has returned with an SR one-seventy-four application. A few drawn images. This is viewing to the north, showing the subject property highlighted in yellow. So, be viewing to the east and viewing to the west. Again, the applicant intends to build a permanent residence and barn using, using the county's opt-out program. Section two-point-six-three of the zoning regulations identifies fifteen factors to evaluate rezoning requests. As is the case with most downzones, there are nine factors applying to this downzone. The request does comply with applicable factors. The proposed residential development is consistent and compatible with the rural residential growth pattern we see in Sun Sites. Um, the downzone reduces allowed residential density. Staff has not received any opposition from nearby property owners. Staff executed the public notification process between fifteen and twenty, August of twenty-twenty-five. And, Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket RZ twenty-five twelve. We are available for your questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Prince, this is the time for your statement. You have ten minutes.
I'm not gonna say very much. I think it's all been explained. Yes, we did apply for SRU four. I had no intention of putting a mobile, so this here fills all my needs. And I'm quite happy with this, and apparently my neighbors are happy with it, too, so I don't see any reason why we shouldn't proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. I have no request to speak. Is there anyone online? Hearing none? We'll also waive your response time, Mr. Prince. Is that all right?
Thank you.
Public hearing is closed. This is time for commission discussion. Any questions? Hearing none? Mr. Taylor, your recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Based on the factors in favor, staff recommends forwarding docket RZ twenty-five twelve to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval without special conditions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We've had a motion for RZ twenty-five dash twelve. Now is the time for vote. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Marzky?
Aye.
And Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is unanimous. Thank you for being persistent, Mr. Prince.
Thank you.
This item will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors meeting dealing with this docket. Next is RZ twenty-five dash one-three, Morris Ranch Road. The applicant requests rezoning to RU ten, Ryan and Desiree Girth. Are you present? Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve RZ twenty-five dash thirteen?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Saunders?
I recommend to, I move to recommend approval of docket RZ twenty-five dash thirteen to the Board of Supervisors without special conditions, rezoning tax parcel two-zero-two-eight-one-one-sixty-nine from SR eight to RU ten. The factors of approval consisting of findings of the fact.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Limbach. Mr. Taylor, your report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for docket RZ twenty-five thirteen. An applicant initiated request to downzone property from SR eight to RU ten. Applicants are Ryan and Desiree Girth. Property is located at thirty-one-twenty-three East Morris Ranch Road. That's tax parcel two-zero-two-eight-one-one-six-nine. Again, the request is a downzone from SR eight to RU ten. The comprehensive plan designations are both rural. Um, there is an existing residence on the property and a small vineyard, as well as some accessory structures. Property is located approximately three miles east of Wilcox and one-half mile east of Interstate ten. Uh, the property is about forty acres. Uh, many of these forty-acre parcels were created via survey back in nineteen-seventy-four, before the county had zoning. Um, frankly, the topography in the area is not conducive to eight-thousand-square-foot lot development. Um, the existing use of the property, as well as future uses, are consistent with rural zoning, which is what the applicants are requesting. And the nearest rural zoning district is approximately eight-hundred feet to the east. These are a few drawn images. This would be viewing to the south with, with an approximation of the property boundaries in yellow. Um, given the, given the lot lines out there, I kind of gave up on the yellow line, so this is roughly viewing to the northeast with the, an accessory structure on the property in the approximate center in white. And also in the foreground, you can see the white accessory structure on the parcel, and this would be viewing to the north. The applicants have provided a site plan showing existing development on the property, again, which includes a principal residence, a twenty-one-hundred-square-foot storage building, as well as a small vineyard and other accessory structures. Section two-point-six-three of the zoning regulations identifies fifteen factors to evaluate rezoning requests. As with most downzones, nine factors apply to this request. The request does comply with the applicable factors. Um, the proposed use and existing use are compatible with the existing rural residential growth pattern of the area. The downzone reduces allowed residential density, and staff did not receive any opposition from nearby property owners. Staff executed the public notification process between fifteen and twenty, August twenty-twenty-five. We received one response, um, having mailed out nine notices, um, one response from the adjacent property to the south in favor. And Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket RZ twenty-five thirteen. We are available for the commission's questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. This is the time for the applicant's statement. Would you like to come forward? And tell us about your project. State your name and address first.
Hi, I'm Desiree Girth, um, and our address is thirty-one-twenty-three East Morris Ranch Road in Wilcox, eight-five-six-four-three. Uh, basically, what we would like to do is use that white structure you see, our existing pole barn, as additional storage for our winery. So, our vineyard and winery are off-site on another property, but, um, just for storage reasons of barrels, uh, we cannot do a non-contiguous property, uh, to hold wine storage in a residential district, but you can in a rural. That would be the plan. Basically, that's it. Nothing, nothing's gonna change. We're not gonna have a tasting room or anything like that. That's all downtown in downtown Wilcox.
Good, good information. We may call you back. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the time for the public hearing. Comments from other persons? I don't have any requests to speak. Is there anyone online? Hearing none? I'm going to assume you waive your right to rebut. Public hearing is closed. Does the commission have any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Taylor, your recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Based on the factors in favor, staff recommends forwarding docket RZ twenty-five thirteen to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval without special conditions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have docket RZ twenty-five dash one-three on the floor. It's time to take the vote unless there's any further question. Mr. Limbach, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye, for that beautiful presentation.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Marzky?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Another un-
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Another unanimous. Congratulations. It sounds like a good plan. This item will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors meeting dealing with this docket. So we have several items left. Does anyone need a break, or shall we move forward?
Good to go.
I think we'll keep going.
Okay.
SU25-14 Hereford Road RV. The applicants are Janelle and Benny Schmidt. Are you present? Can I get a motion to approve SU25-14?
Aye.
Mr. Martzki?
I move to full docket SU2514 with conditions of full, recommended by staff. The factors in favor of full constitute the findings of fact.
Second?
Aye.
Mr. Limbach? Thank you.
Chair and Commissioners, this is the staff presentation for docket SU2514, especially use authorization request to allow recreational vehicle park. The applicant is Janelle and Benny Schmidt. The property is located on Hereford Road, approximately four and a half miles north of Highway 92. Tax parcel 10434010 Alpha. Property is zoned RU4. The comprehensive plan designations are rural. The property is also located within the Southern-South Pedro Valley Area Plan. Current use of the property, the property is currently undeveloped, and again, the proposed use is for a recreational vehicle park. And the property is located in Hereford, about four and a half miles north of Highway 92 and south of the single lane bridge over the San Pedro River. Property totals approximately 38, 30 acres and is surrounded by other parcels zoned RU4. The property is notably located within the San Pedro Riparian National Conservation Area Boundary, which was established by the federal government back in 1988. The property owners do own the parcels to the north and the south, and I believe the parcel further to the north is also privately held, but the majority of parcels in this area are held on our federal land. They fall under BLM ownership. The applicants have provided a site plan showing 30 spaces with access onto Hereford Road. There is a pretty notable flood plain on the property created by a wash Spring Creek. There will be pretty substantial standoff distances from that feature. There are a few drawn images. This would be viewing to the northwest. And to the southwest. To the northeast with the San Pedro in the foreground. This property, or excuse me, this view is viewing to the west showing Spring Creek that crosses the north portion of the property. The property is located within the Southern-South Pedro Valley Area Plan, which was adopted in 2001. The comp plan designates this property as rural residential and growth area D. The area plan designates the property as rural density residential and grazing. The plan identifies rural density as one residence per four acres. RU4 zoning allows one dwelling per four acres. As is customary with area plans, would like to read if the Chair is agreeable the vision statement for the area plan. The Southern San Pedro Valley Area Plan provides direction on how the community chooses to direct residential and business development in order to respect and maintain the existing scenic quality, rural character, and natural resources of the planned area. Some of the purposes of the plan are to ensure new development complements rural character, maintaining existing rural residential development, and preserving washed corridors through setbacks, dedication, or conservation easements. The plan does specifically discuss special uses, stating that special uses are acceptable on a scattered RU4 sites if designed to have no negative offsite impacts. The area plan does identify RV parks, campgrounds, resorts, and guest ranches of rural densities harmonious with the rural residential character if designed to have no significant offsite impacts and are developed in accordance with design standards. RU4 zoning allows one RV space per four acres. One space per acre is what's being requested. Some of the developments are concerns, and as the commission has noted, we've received significant response, approximately 40 responses, mostly via email. And the concerns are generally in the same categories, the location within a conservation area, where you have a sensitive ecosystem and diverse wildlife, as well as migratory paths and nesting habitat. Other concerns include aquifer depletion, the potential for invasive species, or pesticide contamination into the river, stormwater wastewater runoff, human activity, and traffic noise, lights, and other potential impacts from those activities, as well as impacts on historical or cultural resources with ecotourism. Section 2.48 of the zoning regulations identifies 10 factors to evaluate special use applications. Seven factors apply. A lot of the comments are more addressed towards permitting and less the entitlement process. We understand that they are hand in hand. But staff typically will encourage folks, remind folks that based on the factors, we're looking more at the appropriateness of the use for this location as opposed to any potential impacts downstream should the use be established. The request would comply with applicable factors, with conditions. As with most RV parks, and I believe the commission's seen two so far this year, I think this is the third one. We had one near Benson and another one near Waukegan City. We typically would consider these to be fairly clustered and low-impact residential uses and opportunity for tourism, which is encouraged in the comprehensive plan. We did not receive any opposition from nearby property owners. Again, there's only one other private property owner in the area. The rest of the land is federal. Factors not in favor. This request is inconsistent with the area plan designation. There is a waiver request to increase the residential density from one unit per four acres to one unit per acre, and staff has received significant public opposition from The applicants did mail letters as required by the zoning regulations in May, and staff duly noticed this docket in the month of August of 2025. And Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket SU2514, especially use authorization to allow a 30-space recreational vehicle park. We are available for the commission's questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This is time for the applicant's statement. Please state your name and address. You have 10 minutes if you like.
Thank you very much. My name is Benny Schmidt. I'm co-applicant. 7630 South Hereford Road, Hereford, Arizona. Anything else I missed there? Second?
That's good.
So we bought the property two and a half years ago after there's a big fire out there that jumped the river, kind of came throughout the entire property that we bought. So initially, that was our biggest concern was the fires, and again, the riparian right through that area just got leveled with the fire back then. So we looked at it as an opportunity to kind of rebuild and make it something that would be good for tourism, good for the communities around here, to have an educational piece around particularly bird watching, riparian education. And we do everything, again, it's called flowing grace, RV is what it's called. So everything we do glorifies God, which encompasses his beautiful land that we got. And taking care and stewarding that land is important to my wife and myself and my family. So the biggest thing with the design and infrastructure of this property is very minimal impact to the soil. It's going to be more rock coverage, no big pads that are going to be out there. So it's not going to be just demolition of the land. It's going to be preserving what's there and working around that land and protecting the river as well as the riparian. And again, the park, this area that we're looking at is way, way away from the water stretch. Again, our land borders the river. Some of the fence area where this is at is probably even still another 50 feet, some places even more to that river even. So it's set back way closer to Hereford Road, sorry, closer to Hereford Road than it would be anywhere near towards the riverside or towards the riparian. So that will be protected. So that's one of our biggest priorities for that land. Again, gravel, permeable pavers, materials, again, it's definitely geared for watching for runoff, groundwater, then, sorry, then runoff. And using all native plants, again, we're not going to go in changing anything with the horticulture, anything around what's going on with the land. We're going to keep it consistent with what's already there. And again, as you mentioned, it's been vacant since 70, I think mid-'70s when the last owner sold that property to us two years ago. So it's that vacant. And definitely excited about this opportunity to do something like this. Our homestead sits to the north of this property. It's on the 30-acre parcel as well, but we're using about maybe four to five acres for our homestead area. And then we'll do other things out there too with like situations, not to build out, but actually to build kind of within the environment around it. And having the structures that we have, definitely renewable energies. To our homestead, we already did that portion with solar and LED like lighting. We got, definitely, we watched conservative on all the energy usage that we're using in this property. Low flow fixtures and any restrooms, implement water recycling for any uses. Waste reduction, again, we're education, this is a big education for guests that come. It's going to be a big, again, learning, anybody who's come into this riparian typically, or this RV park, has a history of already doing bird watching, so they're already used to the conservation efforts, and we're going to make sure those are very visible as well for people that might be getting their first experience seeing that. And again, impacting the community and the counties, you know, the area with the revenue from tourism is a big impact for sure. No big chemicals, we're not using harsh chemicals on the ground. Again, we're not destroying anything out there. We're going to just be using what's around it and working through that. But again, like I mentioned, signage for marketing for, again, the guests to see how important the riparian is for the history of this area. And that was one of the biggest reasons why we bought the property is because of the history of that. And having, again, minimize the impact that those guests would have on that area. Let's see, they're going to be waste receptacles, obviously, and we are definitely mindful of noise and light pollution. Again, we're homesteading right next to that, so in that area, so it's not going to be about a bunch of crazies going out there, bird watching, partying all night, and doing things that they probably shouldn't. So again, we'll get involved with local conservation efforts. It's going to be a big, again, for us to be able to raise funds and help support the local area and have those native species particularly protected. And then hosting any workshops, environmental issues. In our area where we have our homestead, we already have a big outbuilding built out there. That's a good place for us to house and workshops and things like that that can educate a lot of people about the area and the bird watching particularly. There'll be regular cleaning schedules, again, systems for cleaning, removing sediment and ensured soil porosity. We're not going to be, again, throwing asphalt down and laying things like that through this property. And again, all compliance within the zoning requirements that we already have set forth. So we're definitely knowing the local laws and following those laws is our biggest priority too. And then I would say, first of all, it is, you know, educational to see a lot of the emails coming in. And I think the biggest thing that, again, I can reinforce is, you know, instead of seeing something like this as a threat, think of it as an addition. It's not a threat to that. It's going to make it something more substantial for what the area is needed, which is again why we ended up buying that property. So it's going to be good habitat maintenance for that. Again, engaging to the public for conservation awareness, school visits, things like that will be very important to get the kids involved. And then again, it's a controlled access point, so people aren't just roaming around the land, putting up tents and doing things that they could do to just take advantage of the land. So I would say some other examples of alternatives that could be considered is, again, just campsites. And that's, again, we're not ever going to have those types of campsites, so it's not for us to have anybody coming in and damaging the properties with campsites or any other random things that would come up. No big subdivisions through the area. We're not going to tear down and build a big subdivision. We wouldn't even let a billboard on our property, so now I can see that. So private development, again, it's big. I think it's more environmental harm, those housing developments, definitely from what the studies show. Again, having any type of housing community in there would just be so disruptive to us, the whole ecosystem in that area. And then, again, denying an RV park like this could mean the extra funding, again, that goes to conservation that would not be there otherwise. So in summary, again, we're not replacing the habitat, we're stewarding it. We're actually improving that. Sustainable tourism is a tool for conservation. It's not a threat. It's definitely not a threat. Controlled access protects the riparian zone better than any unmanaged use, and our plan definitely ensures that the land stays wild and while welcoming people who respect that. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The public hearing is now open. Before I start calling on people, I would like to remind you of something Mr. Taylor just said. Much of these plans are conceptual. We cannot answer specific queries about permitting, flooding, septic, lighting, roadways. All of those things will be handled beyond this approval. So if we could keep our comments to things that are pertinent to the concept, I would appreciate it. Let's start with Simone Kier. Says you will be present. Maybe I said the name wrong, Ms. Simone? All right, we'll put you at the bottom of the stack. Holly Richter. Ma'am, you have three minutes. Name and address, please.
Holly Richter. I live at 9525 South Riverview Lane in Hereford, just upstream of this proposed development. I am a riparian ecologist by training. I've spent 25 years studying the San Pedro River. I've also managed a lot of recreational areas in different rivers, both in Arizona and Colorado, with trail systems and bird watching facilities. I know a lot about how much people love rivers. They love the shade, they love the water. My, I did submit a letter with, has 11 different concerns about this proposal, but what I really want to emphasize today is a couple things. The main one is the offsite impacts, because I know from experience that people don't come to a 30-acre parcel and stay on that parcel, right? They're there to see a river and to enjoy the shade and the water and the wildlife. And there are no developed facilities. BLM has no capacity to handle the additional visitation in that area. There's no signage, there's no trails, it's wildland backcountry along the river. That being said, that wildland backcountry of BLM, it just transitions right into private properties. You don't know when you're on BLM or when you're on a private property or in a neighboring ranch. This was traditionally a ranchland property, like the ranchlands around it, and having also worked on the community plan years ago for this area, I know how important this rural residential and agricultural lifestyle is to everybody in the area. And I feel like this commercial development is very incompatible with both the community area plan and the ability of BLM to manage this increased use. I also know that as good as the intent is for the proponent of this project to increase ecotourism, which I think is generally a great thing, they cannot manage people offsite of their private 30 acres once they hit the river. BLM doesn't have the capacity, the rural neighbors and adjacent landowners don't have the capacity, and it's just not the right place for the proposed use. I have to say, thanks.
Thank you. Is it Clancy? Phil? I'm sorry, Phil? State your name and address, please.
My name is-
My name is Philip Clutch and my address is one, seven, eight, zero, West Relito Street, Tucson, Arizona, eight, five, seven, oh, five. I don't have much to say. I'm the contractor that would be doing this. And all I would state is that we will try to, if I can find my notes here. I first off, appreciate you letting me speak. We plan to follow all codes and setbacks if this was a path, if this is passed. We will do our best to minimize the impact if possible. We want to ensure that the land stays wild. We are not building on the river or near the river. I understand there's hikers all around, even down, they can park down there and hike the river. That won't change, nothing we can do is going to change that. Our hikers, what the people that we would have, the land is fenced off from the river. So that would have a little impact. And like I said, there are hikers that go in the area and go in the river now. We, my, the owners do want to, you know, like have bird watchers there and educate the community. We want to, we want to keep respect with all natural resources out there. We will do our best to work with the community and we're happy to take your concerns and to consideration. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda DiMarco.
Hi, I'm Linda DiMarco, one, oh, nine, two, three, South Paloma Trail, Hereford. And I just learned about this proposition two days ago. So I only have a couple of brief comments to say. I just feel that this particular usage is incompatible with the agricultural and residential surrounding area. I think it will be harmful to the integrity of the riparian area. I think the riparian area, as I know it, is promoting passive recreation. I think the addition of motorized vehicles will increase the traffic back and forth to town. I know I've been to many campgrounds, they're noisy. You cannot control the the people who are camping there. There's no way. I don't think there'll be able to be regulatory signs or anything. And the traffic will increase of people going running to town for something they've forgotten, you know, back and forth. And we know Hereford Road is a one lane bridge going into Sierra Vista. I think that'll have an impact. The other thing I'm concerned about is the noise of generators running during the night. Also, the impact on the environment of waste disposal and running water out of our riparian area groundwater supply. And I don't know how much of an impact that'll have, but it's a concern of mine. And I also think that development of this kind might set a precedent for future development on Hereford Road. And I don't think that would be a desirable thing to have in that particular area because it's surrounded by agriculture. The other thing I have a concern about is that it's adjacent to Echoing Hope Ranch. And I wonder how the impact of the noise of a campground will affect the autistic community in that particular area. And that's, that's about all I have to say. But as I said, I've just heard about this a couple of days ago. So I'm sure I have many more reasons. But at the moment, this is all I can think of right now.
Thank you, ma'am. Online, Joanne Roberts.
Hi, I'm Joanne Roberts, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Thank you very much for allowing us to present comments this evening. I am Joanne Roberts. I'm resident of the Upper San Pedro Valley at seven, nine, three, oh, South Sunnyvale Road in Hereford. And I am also the Vice President of the Friends of the San Pedro River Board of Directors. I'm a retired wildlife conservation biologist and have done study, scientific research on endangered threatened species and land management throughout the areas surrounding Sierra Vista, Fort Huachuca, and other areas of the state. I'm representing myself as well as the Friends of the San Pedro River in opposition to this application, contrary to the staff's recommendation to approve it. We do not believe that our comments that we submitted by email to Matthew Taylor as planner for this project should be ignored in, but I don't believe that enumerating those comments tonight serves any useful purpose. I would like to remind the commission that approving this application for a commercial endeavor on an RU four is in conflict with a rural residential dispersed rural living. And we would also like to remind the commission that specifically as it has to do with the historic and current value of the San Pedro National Conservation Area, that it would be a failure for this county and for the people of our communities if anything were to happen to the San Pedro NCA. It's a public, private, or a public ownership and is under protection since nineteen eighty-eight. And with all the organizations, private and federal and state, that have come together over the last thirty years for protection, bringing on additional stresses like a thirty space RV park is inconceivable. I also wanted to confirm how many wells were on the property parcel that we are considering in this application. We, as an organization, could only find one, but it was indicated in the staff report as a plural with an S, so wells. So I just wanted to clarify that. As well as to say that even though the intention is not to use any hazardous or harmful chemicals and materials, RV parks do generate them. And therefore, nothing that is stated in the application or lack thereof has given us any indication of how this will be remediated. And it is a consideration to think of in soil percolation and into the waterways. At this time, I'd like to say thank you for the time tonight to comment. I'd also like to thank Matthew Taylor for providing our organization with guidance through this process. And we would highly recommend that you take our recommendations to heart should this application be approved and move be moved forward. Recommendations such as an environmental impact statement.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Your time is expired.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Pamela. I can't read it, I'm sorry. Thank you, Bowie. Name and address, you have three minutes.
My name is Pamela Bowie and my address is ten, four, nine, East Highway ninety-two, sorry about the center, and on Highway ninety-two. I'm on the south end of the San Pedro River. Now, something I'd like to add, because of course, we had the listing, everyone has the same concerns that were shared on the email. I'm not going to go into all that, but to add to it, I would like to say this is a very unique piece of property because it's considered what, what some of us call the clog. The clog is where residential or private property was all the way up near, very near to the river and not having a buffer of the BLM land. Okay, like many areas around San Pedro River does. The BLM is very, is involved on east and west side of the San Pedro River, as you know. But this particular area on the west side and east side has residential or private land up to the river. Okay, so there's that concern of, of what can someone do on private land, especially when being that close to the river. The, we could, take a look at it. It's, it's very unique, but it also has, it has, it's a refuge for our, we don't have an overabundance of wildlife. We do not have an overabundance of natural resources in this county with water. So they should be taken as something to be very much protected. Okay, throughout this county. We don't have, especially with the drought that we had in the past ten years and so on so forth. This affected us, as you well, well know. The projection for Cochise County oftentimes has been since the eighties and nineties is that there's going to be a younger group of retirees that are interested in places to go where there's more outdoors activities and resources. Well, Cochise County, for many years since the eighties and nineties that I recall, have set up, started proposals, but never quite finished them, i.e. walking trails where the old railroad track was along the river, that type of venue. Also, what occurred in the eighties and nineties with around Palominas, that valley was such a gem and could have been such a resource for Cochise County for hiking trails, along with the growth of residential areas. But what happened was a lot of fencing, a lot of fencing off areas. And now the the valley itself is pretty much blockaded in many aspects as far as horseback riding. I'm a horseback rider. So I'm very well aware of the restrictions there for. So I am concerned about what's happening at with the San Pedro River. I guess my time is up already, huh?
It is. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to call for Simone Kier again. Did she show up online, perchance?
Is there anyone online that would like to speak on this docket? Madam Chair, we do have one individual with their hand up.
Okay, let's have that individual now.
Uh, go ahead, Deborah.
She need to unmute?
Deborah, you'll need to unmute yourself.
I don't think we're going to be able to hear you. Oh, there you go.
I'm so sorry, I couldn't find the mute button. My name's Deborah Chatham. I live at seventy-eight, thirty-five, East Candidate Drive. And I'm not quite as near the river as some of the other speakers, but I love the river and go there often. And I just want to, I won't say all the things everybody else has, has already said. I would ask you to please consider voting no on this applicant's project. And my reason is that he has a lot of really nice words to say about his intentions and probably even means it. However, I don't see that there's anything holding him to those words if this is granted. So I ask that you consider not granting this application. Thank you for your time and I appreciate your patience on my unmuting issue.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to reiterate that we received seventy-one pages of commentary, mostly in opposition, that amounted to forty, between forty and forty-five different people. This commission reads those. So all of that has been taken into consideration. And then this evening, we received seven additional negative comments. We do read that all of that.
Two and a half million times. So in every kind of environment that is is present in Cochise County, winter, summer, snow, ice on the bridge, the single lane bridge, by the way, and, you know, the blazing heat of the summer, the downpours, the monsoons, all of it. And all of that time, driving trucks, pulling trailers, not unlike RVs and campers and motorhomes. That's how I made my living and raised some kids in the media doing that. So I'm very familiar with this area. And when I first saw the application in my email, I said, oh, I know where that is. But then my first thought was, well, that may be a difficult spot to have this. And my first question is about traffic, is not about the seventy-one plus pages of other interests that people have complained about or offered their their worries and concerns. Okay, that's separate. And I've read every bit of that too, as Kim has said, up till two o'clock this morning, reading all of that. But my issue today with the traffic to start with, coming off of Hereford Road there into that driveway, and I see that this drawing does have a scale of one inch to seventy-five feet. Is that, am I reading that correctly? Anybody? I can't see it from here. Okay. My concern is turning in or out of that driveway off of Hereford Road. And staff, if we could get the aerial view of Hereford Road to the north and to the south, where the, there you go, where there's a significant bend in the road there. And there's another one to the south. Driving those, I can tell you that not everybody is a great driver. And people do go fast on there sometimes, but you can't see until you get to the curb what's ahead of you. And when you have a tractor and a trailer or an RV or a Ford F four fifty with a thirty foot motor on the back, trying to pull out onto the road, and it's not a highway, it is a two lane blacktop country road. sixteen feet wide, is that correct? And is this where you would have these vehicles parked in a interval like that?
Yeah.
As has been mentioned in several of these letters of concern, I've been, I do, I have done a lot of driving in Arizona too, and the western United States, and I've been to many campgrounds. I've never seen one laid out like that because they are rather compact and packed in there. Others have some space or some orientation to them. I wonder about the use of that. When your vehicle is eight feet wide and your lot is sixteen feet wide, even if you could park it in the exact center, you're going to have four feet on each side of your lot, right? Your neighbor will have the same four feet. So at best, you're going to have eight feet between each trailer or camper. I wonder about the proximity for safety, for noise, for other types of pollution, or even human behavior that could be controversial at times. And I'm not sure that I understand, furthermore, either way, you know, if you back into the space, okay, you have to back in. If you pull in straight, you're going to have to back out. One way or another, you're going to have to reverse your flow there. And I wonder about the ability of multitudes of campers being able to do that. Can I just ask, if it's appropriate, what inspired that particular layout?
So it's going to be, there's going to be pull-throughs.
They are pull-throughs?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's more driving area?
They have to go forwards, sir.
They will all be pull-through spots, so there will not be backing out. And particularly, the space will be engineered for that, so nobody's going to be backing up their camper to get out of a spot. It's all going to be pulling through, coming through the property.
Okay, well, that would help a lot.
And also, if I could speak about the highway or the road, Hereford Road, that's about a quarter-mile gap right there before that bend starts to happen, where that space is. So, and also, there's going to be a road cut in for a turn-in lane, so there's going to be another turn-in lane that's going to be required for that spot. We talked to the county about that.
Okay, so that's my question, because it's not shown there.
Yeah.
But we agree that it would be required.
Yes, the county already told us that we'd have to...
You didn't make that turn.
No, yeah, no.
Okay. Still, my concern is the traffic there and pulling out at one mile an hour to two, if you're trying to get up to speed, before somebody at sixty-five or seventy miles an hour gets on you from either direction. And as I say, my entire life here raising kids in the area, driving them to school, knowing all the other parents and their kids, and going to the sporting events and whatnot, use that road a lot. And it kind of terrifies me what could happen. There was a national event just recently of a semi-tractor trailer pulling a U-turn. It should not have happened, but somebody else crashing into it three fatalities. And that's something that I can't get out of my head right there.
Yeah.
And of course, it's a country road, there's no lights or anything at night, it can get very dark. It's a major concern that I have with this location. It was mentioned by Mr. Taylor that earlier this year, we did have another RV park in Wachukah City that was very well orchestrated, the drawings were professional, everything was laid out great, but the location was bad because of the traffic at the so-called Mustang Corners out there in Wachukah City, where there are a number of wrecks and very bad wrecks all the time. Traffic is not good. And because of that, that park was denied. I'm worried on a similar threat with this one, and I can't really get past that. Now, that's just traffic, okay? As I said, we stayed up, I stayed up and read all seventy-one pages. Steph, people, could you show the letters? You don't just scan them, you don't have to stick any of them. But that's more than we've ever seen here, and by a large margin. And I've read every bit of it, and I was taking notes at some point, and was particularly impressed with somebody named Holly Richter, who I've never met until just now, but she did make some very compelling arguments. And so, okay, if you could just scan these folks and see how much there is there. And I found all of it to be well-considered. It was courteous, there's no table banging, or yelling, or screaming, or demands being made there. There are genuine concerns, and I couldn't find disagreement with any of it, to be honest with you. Minor measures of a certain amount of water, or this or that, can be debated, but the concept overall, I just have to agree with it. And I don't understand how putting a small development there would improve that natural environment. Leaving it alone as it is would be the best it could be. It wouldn't get better by the presence of humans. And I believe Holly and some other people mentioned the presence of pets and dogs because they always bring them, and I don't know how that would get along in that immediate area. Don't worry about it. I don't think that it's a bad idea, but somewhere else, you know, I think that's not a good spot for it, all of these things considered. Last, I'll try to finish here, Chair Lady. About a four, five-page letter from Ron Stewart, who is the president of the Friends of the San Pedro River. And while I may have had disagreements with them in the past on certain things, I find all of their concerns here to be compelling, such as, in the application, he calls for laundry, bathhouse, septic facility, other items that are not portrayed up there. And I wonder where that would be septic, especially important in this area? No specificity. The application itself, sir, had a lot of blanks that weren't filled out, and some of that information would have been on those blanks. Is there, is there some reason you'd like to tell us why they're blanks, or?
I think it's just because it's a, it's a rendering here, just a drawing, in other words. And again, it's, it's something that we, we know the zoning for the property, and we meet every criteria for that. And again, I think it's safe to say that any property that you have left undone might be better, but again, in this case, it's going to be driving tourism, it's going to be helping fundraise for all these conservators. Our efforts aren't just for having RV pads, it's for the entire community, entire area. And again, we've talked to the county even at the time of purchase about this, and knowing what it is and what we could do on this property, particularly the issue of the driving lanes. My dad was killed in a car accident, I still don't hold that against him, I still drive, so accidents do happen. There's, there's about a quarter-mile, like I said, at least, of a straight way, even further up, that's coming from the other direction. And I want to remind you guys, or everybody here in council, that not everybody's coming in at once, or leaving at once. So there's going to be flow of traffic, just like Echoing Hope. So they have a flow of traffic, sorry, a flow of traffic every day that they meet. And I haven't seen any major things with that. And if people are going seventy miles an hour and forty-five, accidents could happen anywhere.
It's true.
So that's why there's a nice straightaway from that middle of that yellow line, all the way to the other end of it. So it's, actually, it's closer to a half a mile of, because it's a mile stretch for that. So there's plenty of room for, with the extra additional turning lane, to have that, that meets that requirement. And that's all I have with that.
Well, I appreciate that. I'm very sorry about your experience. My concern wasn't with a massive increase of traffic volume, it was the nature of the traffic and the danger of it, you know?
Right.
And there's kids in the school buses, and I drove those kids, and nowadays, those, they have kids, and I know them too, and their parents, and it's a very rural community-type areas, as you're finding out. So I'm just protective of that, and I have a lot of concern that way. I'll try to wrap this up then, although I will forget ten things. Generators, in the application, I believe, which, was it handwritten when you filled it out? The application?
Was it handwritten?
It, it rings a bell to me, okay?
I don't think it was.
One of the others was about noises and sounds, and generators were listed. And whoever filled it out suggested that generators and something else would be the only noise makers.
Yeah, there's no, it's all going to be solar right to the spots, right to each space. What's the cable side or whatever?
Solar.
Okay.
So, yeah.
There's no generators on that property. It's all going to be right to the plug-in, for them to plug right in without the use of it, without the need of a generator.
I get that. Would all the campers be limited to solar application, or could they run generators?
No, we don't want generators on the property, so we're not going to allow generators on the property.
Okay.
That's why we're investing, that's why we're investing in the solar, right to each hookup, so every hookup will have their own.
Okay, but we could find it, looking at the application, it does cite that, whoever filled it out, as a thing to know, that there would be generator noise, okay? So if they're not. Maybe my last question, two last questions. Does the site is identified as ninety acres, is that correct?
Yeah, there's three thirty-acre parcels.
Okay, one of these questions and concerns says that it's actually thirty-point-six-five acres.
Could be.
I haven't looked into it.
Yeah, I haven't walked it lately.
Okay.
But yeah, it could be.
Then the application also defines a five-thousand-square-foot building available for storage or something else.
Yeah, we have the...
Where is that?
That's the outbuilding on our property to the north by Echoing, towards Echoing Hope, from that. That's our, that's a big blue outbuilding, if you drive that area, you'd see it every day. You can't miss it. So it's a big, big blue building. That's where we would do some of the educational workshops and things like that in that building. So that's part of our homestead, that's not part of the RV pads.
Okay. Okay, this time I will stop. One of our obligations at the commission is to consider residents in the area who offer an opinion. And this time, there's been a whole bunch of them, more than I've ever seen here, and they are all unified in their opinions. Like I say, they were all, as I say, well-done, well-stated, well-presented to us.
Except for the poaching.
No, I hear no hedges. I do appreciate that. And as the Chair, Chair Lady said before, they were read. So if you ever think your letters are not being read, they are at the commission here in Cochise County. Thank you, I'm all finished.
Thank you, Mr. McCamery.
Take a wake-up now.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask a few specific questions before I ask someone else. Are you going to dictate length of stay? Will you be long-term or short-term?
It'll be more short-term.
Okay, so people will be coming and going, as you mentioned, on a daily basis, and you will have full hookups? Never heard of an RV that doesn't have to use its own generator.
Yeah, plug in right in, so you don't need to...
Know if you can get enough solar to run a fridge, but...
No, 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 yeah, this is not a solar panel to run a fridge from, so.
Okay.
We have it on the homestead already, for the homestead side of it, so in lieu of electric, we did solar, so we're using the same concept.
Okay.
For each, each specific spot.
Okay, and that was one of my questions. So you, you're living already adjacent in the north thirty?
Not yet.
Close. But you're working on it?
Friday, next Friday is closing on the, you know?
Okay. All right, I'd like to ask Mr. Watkins? Any questions?
Yeah, I've been writing some questions. I just want to clarify one thing, the current building that's there, and I drive by that all the time, you kept saying to the north, that'd be between this property...
Oh, I'm sorry, to the south, sorry, to the south towards Echoing, sorry about that, yes.
All right.
That helps.
And then I heard in the back, your engineer saying sulfur springs, that is not their territory.
Yeah, it's A.D.S.
Yes, territory, yeah. All right, solar, or do you have battery backups for this at night?
We do on our homestead, so we would have the same.
Well, for the RVs?
Yeah, we definitely have the same backup.
Okay, because, yeah.
We wouldn't, we were not going to allow generators on that property, so, again, we live right there, so we live right to the side of that, in other words, so.
So you're a generator?
Yeah, we're not going to have generators, noise, there's no noise pollution, which is a big thing for the migrations and all these things that have been spoken about. And again, those types of things, again, with what we're doing to that land since the fire happened, that's the biggest threat to that land, not this RV park, it's the fires. It's definitely the fires. So it's one of those things that is naturally coming with lightning strikes, and, and people burning trash that jumps the river upstream, so the fires are the biggest threat to that riparian versus people in RVs who are far, far away from the water and with no access to the water.
All right. Let's see.
Mr. Watkins, could you talk about ag, if they used ag? You usually talk to us about how much water they would use if it was ag.
Well, if, I mean, that's rangeland, all you would have is a water tank for cattle or horses or whatever. The property to the north, Ranch of Del Rio, uses a lot more water because they have irrigated pasture, and they have most beautiful pond in the county before the fire. And now, I sure wish they'd swim out there and get the goose turned back over.
Yeah, he's been, he's in Utah, so he's not making it back.
But anyway, I know the people that lease the pasture, anyways.
By the way, we have two ponds, by the way, that we're going to be filling up in that side, right to the south of his pond.
Yeah. But again, that, that can cause more concern on water use, because ponds, they're beautiful and all, but what purpose do they serve?
For the birds, you know, for eco, for the environment, so to have another water space.
There are different thoughts about that.
Well, of course, everybody has different thoughts, I think, on everything.
Yeah.
So that's pretty common.
But speaking of water, you're going to provide water, full hookups, you will provide Again, this is a regulation thing, I have a background in water systems. Because of the number of hookups, you're going to be a community water system, you're going to fall under all kinds of DEQ regulations. I'm just throwing that out there. They're a nightmare.
Yeah.
Again, if we had, if you didn't, didn't do this, this is just thirty acres, you could do seven home sites. On the whole, ninety acres, you could do twenty-one home sites. So just think what the impact of that is on the river. I personally would hate to see that.
Right.
I lived south of here for eight years, drove by it every day. When they put the white pipe fence in, I thought, oh, that's pretty cool. I remember when Echoing Hope was McGal Craig Farm, beautiful farm. But that's either near, neither here nor there. I don't, to be truthful, I have not set my opinion yet, so I'm just going to sit and listen to what everybody else has to say.
Ms. Fickett, do you have questions?
I'm kind of along with Mr. Watkins. I, having lived in Cochise County all my life, I live on the other border up there, where we are currently experiencing significant water shortage, mainly because people coming in and having put in different agriculture...
Again, this is a regulation thing. I, I have a background in water systems. Um, you're, because of the number of hookups, you're going to be a community water system. You're going to fall under all kinds of DEQ reg, regulations. I'm just throwing that out there.
Okay.
They're a nightmare.
Yeah.
Um, again, if we had, if you didn't, didn't do this, this is just 30 acres, you could do seven home sites. On the whole 90 acres, you could do 21 home sites. So just think what the impact of that is on the river. I personally would hate to see that.
Right.
I lived south of here for eight years, drove by it every day. Um, when they put the white pipe fence in, I thought, oh, that's pretty cool. I remember when Echoing Hope was, um, McGal Craig Farm. Beautiful farm. But, uh, that's either near, neither here nor there. I don't. Tell you the truth, I have not set my opinion yet. So I'm just going to sit and listen to what everybody else has to say.
Ms. Fickett, do you have questions?
I'm kind of along with Mr. Watkins. I having lived in Cochise County all my life, I live on the other border up there where we are currently, uh, experiencing significant, uh, water shortage, uh, mainly because people coming in and having put in different agriculture of crops that has depleted our water system. And we're in a pretty serious situation there. My, I am very familiar with water companies. My husband happens to run the water improvement district in our area. And we have, uh, really, we've had some major significant problems with, with providing water just for our town itself. And, uh, I, I'm not sure that you have totally, um, thought through your planning completely. I think that you could, uh, I think there's some more work needs to be done and more investigation into possibly what you're going to really encounter with doing this.
Can I say something? Again, the water is definitely the biggest benefit that we have on that land. It's a 500 gallon per minute well that's down there. So the capacity for that well, um, based on expectations is minimal compared to what's there. Um, it's a 400 foot deep well that is 16 inches from the surface. Um, and just had them tested when we purchased, just had them tested when we filled another area with our property with another well that's like similar, same capacity. Um, that's one of the resources that we have. And that's another reason why we bought the property. Cause it has those resources that have been there, um, since this early seventies, when those two wells were, were drilled. They've been consistent.
If we continue with the major drought that we're having now, and it's predicted that we will, be surprised how fast that, uh, flow of water diminishes. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders?
Yeah, a couple of quick things. First of all, I think everything got answered that I wanted, except septic system, what are you doing? What was your plan there?
Yeah, well, there will be septic systems for that property.
For all the year, all three.
Yes. Yeah, everything will have a septic.
And, and I don't know if I missed, didn't understand you what, you, you don't own the property yet? You're going to close next week? Is that what you?
The, the build out of our homestead is to the property between that proposed site and the Echoing Hope Ranch. So we're just straight to the south of that parcel. So we're this parcel right to the south that we have our homestead on.
Okay. But you're closing next week on this property? Is that what you said?
On, on the homestead.
On the home.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Gonzalez, what do you have?
I have some thoughts and concerns. First of all, I like your concept. I like the fact that there's potential for economic development improvements in the community. I like the part where I sense that you are aware of your uh, stewardship responsibilities to that land. I get a sense that you're aware of the fragile balance of resources in that area. Now you're willing to work to maintain the health of that environment and all that. I'm not so concerned with the people part. There's people walking around probably as we speak.
Yes.
People run from the border to, I don't know where else up north, but they're always in the river. So I'm not concerned with that so much. Uh, you're going to have impacts, uh, some positive, some negative. And your neighbors are going to point that out. There, uh, nobody wants to change anything and along the river. We love the river. We, we have visions of what it could be, what it was, and how to maintain all that stuff. And those visions are all right, but nobody's doing much about it, you know? So to see a young person come in that wants to tackle that and take a chance and invest money in developing something, uh, that might be positive for the community. It's inevitable that your concept, uh, your concept is going to grow. It's growing all over Cochise County. But if you're bringing in people to increase appreciation for the wildlife, the vegetation, and helping them to become better stewards of the land through educational programs and whatnot. I, uh, I'm very comfortable with that. I know that water is going to be an issue of all the natural resources. Water is the white gold.
Yep.
And that's the one that's going to give you the most headaches. But being a good steward, being aware of the fragile balance, you know, you gotta make everything dance to the same tune as far as resources. Uh, but traffic, I don't know why people think that it's your responsibility to improve the traffic. It's there. Somebody else has to take care of that. You take care of the traffic in and out of your property or within. Everything else is the same, you know, uh, we have a drought. Okay, we have a drought. Everybody's going to have it. That's just you. And so I am, uh, I'm satisfied that, uh, and I feel good about my decision to support you and what you're trying to do. I think it's inevitable. I see a lot of growth. All the applications we get, they talk about noise and dust and flooding and traffic and all that. That's not unique to your, your concept. It's a concept at this point. And if you're looking for specifics, I'm sure you'll get them. Because if you work with, we have a fine staff that can guide you through all that. So I am, uh, I'm satisfied.
Thank you.
I think you'll do a good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Marzky.
Oh, no.
We saved Sage for last. Mr. Limbach?
Oh, yes, Madam Chair, uh, thank you. Uh, all my questions and concerns have been addressed, um, in large part by Mr. Chairman Montgomery's, uh, comments and questions. Uh, but like many nearby residents in opposition, I do have concerns regarding the traffic and environmental impact of this project. I really would have liked to have seen a, a far more comprehensive written plan as opposed to just words. Um, so I, I believe the applicants are well intentioned, but have not necessarily thoroughly thought through uh, the impacts, uh, of such a project will have on this, uh, complex ecosystem. And that's it. All my comments.
Can I say something?
Thank you, Mr. Limbach. Go ahead, sir.
Um, I just want to reiterate again, we worked with the county that purchased this property regarding that turn in to this property for this purpose. And again, it's, that's what's required. So again, going back to my original presentation, following every guideline and law the county state has regarding turn ends to properties, we're going to meet them. So there is a solve that's not going to keep the, keep those vehicles out on the Hereford Road doing anything. They're going to be able to turn right in and go through the property with that, with that turn in.
Yes, that, that will all work itself out in the permitting process as we, as we discussed in here. All right. If there's nothing else, I, I'd like to pontificate just a little bit. This, this is quite the tension here. We have private property owners that deserve to use RU4. According to our code, um, however, it happens to be in very, very sensitive land. The San Pedro Valley Plan clearly states business uses serving a local area as and its residents may be appropriate. I'm not sure how this is serving local local residents. I'm, I'm struggling with that. In addition, the plan also states that it encourages business and medium-high density residential land uses along Highway 92. So clearly you don't qualify for that exception. It says between Palominas Road and Healing Way. That's far distant from your property. So again, the two things that are in tension here, um, what is a private property owner to do if we're going to preclude everything that he wants to do on his property because it's pretty? So we need to consider that. Um, is his need to make a living enough reason to say that the plan is appropriate? I, yeah, this, this is a hard one. Um, everybody would give this a lot of thought. I think we'll move to vote unless there's something someone has to say.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
You had asked me earlier to kind of expand on the agricultural.
Yes.
Whatever. And I've just been here thinking water use in that valley and that, even on next to the river is not regulated. He could develop a full irrigation system on this property and use the amount of water he wanted or needed. Um, I'm just saying that could be a worst case scenario. And lots of irrigation that has gone by the wayside along the river. And, uh, well, one of my properties is one of them that's gone by the wayside. So.
And then, sorry, can I speak?
Service.
And that, that drives a very big point. Again, we could do many things. I listed just a couple of different things that could be horrible for that area. And it would be presented. That would be far worse of an impact for that area.
That was more or less the point I was trying to make.
Yeah.
But, but again, is, is this particular use appropriate?
Well, I get people's feedback and understanding that completely. Um, and again, everybody has opinions. Everybody has science. Everybody has all those things that come up every day when it comes to wildlife. And again, our job is to steward that land and enhance that land to give that land something that it doesn't have, doesn't, hasn't had, which is other things out there for those, for the wildlife.
You know, one other question I did have for you, you just made me realize, you said you're going to fence it off?
It already is.
And so your, your, your RV tenants will not be able to access the river?
If they want to go around the bridge, that's where access.
So you're going to encourage them to exit vehicular?
Yeah, if they want to go walk around to the, or parked by the bridge like they do today.
Yeah, that's.
So again, there's, there's, that's why I mean, it's not going to, it's not going to be people out there doing that. They're not going to go out there and walk that mile in or whatever it is to that point.
Okay.
Or further.
So that's your intention.
So there, they'll see the parking space when they pull into the area, that there's a parking trails, in other words. So those trails are more of a threat than our property is to that riparian. Because that's totally random people coming in that aren't necessarily bird watchers or enthusiasts of nature. They're out there hiking, which again, most of them are there for the birds and the watching. And that's what we encourage. So again, that's going to help, you know, that whole area again, when it comes to that for the local tourism and the dollars for the county too.
All right, Mr. Smith, I think we've, we've done enough.
One, uh, quick reminder, uh, in every application that we review, uh, one of the things that we are required to consider, but we're not shackled to it, but we do have to consider that is called public input. And as you already mentioned a couple of times, um, 70 to 80 pages of input. Uh, and by apparently 45 different people not favoring this, and many of them local people. There's a couple from Tucson.
A lot of business owners too in there. A lot of other business owners in there too.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I noticed one, uh, one, um, letter in support of this, uh, and it was from the applicant. So, um, it's a pretty lopsided, uh, public opinion. And we've had to consider it in the past. So again, we're not obliged to it, but we do have to consider it. That's all.
All righty. We will continue to ponder as Mr. Taylor gives his recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends approval of docket SU 2514 to allow 30 space recreational vehicle park with the following conditions. Condition one, RV park is limited to 30 spaces. Condition two, county right of way and land clearing permits are required. Condition three, quiet hours shall be observed 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, seven days per week. Condition four, park shall be kept in a sanitary condition. Temporary refuse and animal waste receptacles shall be appropriately sized and designed not to create an attractive nuisance. Condition four, uh, five, perimeter open space shall be retained. Existing vegetation shall be supplemented with native drought tolerant vegetation as needed. Condition six, parking areas and internal areas will utilize two-inch gravel to minimize dust and reduce soil erosion. These are fairly standard conditions that staff includes with most recreational vehicle park requests in rural districts. Standard conditions related to condition acceptance permitting timelines and modification, uh, remain in effect. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve docket SU 25-14, Hereford Road RV. I would like to now take the vote. Mr. Limbach?
I'm going to vote no primarily, uh, uh, I have the same concerns expressed by many of the, uh, residents and I, uh, I didn't, I wish there would have been more uh, comprehensive, uh, written information as far as the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery.
Well, I'm going to have to vote no to deny in spite of the fact that I am a free enterprise capitalist American and have worked that very lifestyle my whole life here. And so I do know the details of the area and I just think it's unsafe. And I have to consider the 45 to one vote against it.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins.
Uh, I'm going to go vote no right now. I think there's a lot of planning that needs to be done. Uh, I think 30 spaces is too many. Um, I, I just think, yeah, something might be able to be done there, but, um, not at this time. I keep comparing in my mind to the Ben Breakfast across the river. If they came in today, would it be approved? That's, that's why I'm questioning.
Thank you. Ms. Fickett?
I'm going to vote no for those same reasons, uh, we have previously listened to, took into consideration the oppositions to a plan. I really think that there needs to be a little bit more comprehensive planning involved and a little more thought put. And I agree that probably 30 spaces is, uh, too many for that area. Yet I am also run my own businesses most of my life and, uh, it's kind of hard. I, it's a, it's a hard vote, but I think that maybe you think it through a bit or come back again.
Mr. Saunders?
I'm going to go vote no because mostly of the public input. And when, maybe you could, um, meet with them and do something and let it bring them up to speed a little better, what you want to do there.
Mr. Gonzalez?
My vote, yes. To this, I think it's a good idea. I think it's kind of ahead of its time. It's inevitable. I believe that the applicants who work with the appropriate authorities or people in charge make the proper adjustments to satisfy all the needs and all the requirements for this application to be successful.
Thank you. And Mr. Marzky?
Owing, yes.
Thank you, sir. The chair votes no. I think I would like to echo, um, Commissioners Watkins and Fickett that something can be done there. Little less intense, maybe something that doesn't cause so much comings and goings in the fragile riparian area. I am sorry, this motion has been denied. Um, anyone disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors within 15 days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk at the office Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, or online at cochise dot az.gov. And I thank you for your patience. Now do I get a vote for a break? All right. We will take a five-minute break.
I live on
We have this series.
We have this area.
All that.
Gas station.
Yeah.
Right.
And the general cross street.
Yeah.
Okay.
Instead, you know, like five and six. But this is, you know, that, you know, not to a scale. So you have been the, before they were, yeah. Sure. People have, we're investing in my family, so. I don't, she, yeah. We're, 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 it's a lax again. This, he thinks it's going to be sent in. It's, 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 it's,
Oh, he was coming out.
Oh, okay, then I don't go very wide.
I have his phone.
I am.
You can leave the meeting.
You're working. Let's go. And drink a sip of tea, you know. Get a bar again and a keg of beers.
All right, next up tonight is SU 25-20, Madera Drive Charitable Services. The applicant is Darryl Willhite, the ever patient. We'll get with you in a moment, sir. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve docket SU 25-20.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
I move to approve docket SU 25-20 with conditions of approval recommended by staff. The factors in favor of approval constituting the findings of fact.
In a second?
Second.
Mr. Martzky, second, thank you.
First one going.
The public hearing is now open. Mr. Taylor, your director's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for docket SU 2520, special use authorization request for a charitable service with residential component. The applicant is Darryl Willhite. The property is located 8688 East Madera Drive, uh, tax parcel 10715037 Bravo. The property is owned RU4. Plan designations are rural. The site has an existing dwelling. Um, the proposal is to continue the residential use with this charitable service, uh, containing a residential component. Property is located approximately four miles east Sierra Vista. This parcel was created via survey in 1980 and located in an area zoned RU4 with an established rural residential development pattern. Just to make some distinctions on group quarters versus charitable service with a residential, um, group quarters are distinguished from welfare and charitable services. Uh, these would typically involve something along the lines of fraternities or dormitories or rooming houses. Um, in this particular case, um, the applicant is proposing a maximum of 10 residents on a voluntary yet temporary basis. These can be operated, um, in a zoning district, uh, obviously in rural districts, uh, by public agencies or private associations. Um, and they are intended to provide support for folks who may be unhoused or in need of, um, a group setting for a recovery. These are not court ordered. Um, these folks are not ordered to the site by a legal entity. The applicant has provided a site plan demonstrating the current, um, current improvements on the property. Again, there is a single family residence on the property with some accessory structures. The green box at the top left, um, the applicant is a pastor and would like to, at some point in the future, um, possibly build a chapel on site. These are some drone images. This one is viewing to the south. An image to the northeast showing some of the adjacent residential parcels. Little bit closer image to the south, um, again, showing that the property basically has a residential character established with it. And this would be viewing to the north with, uh, Madera Drive in the foreground, um, with the rear of the residence in the foreground. Section 2.48 of the zoning regs identify 10 factors to evaluate special use requests. Eight, eight factors apply to this application. This request does comply with applicable factors and the residential use is consistent with the area's rural residential character. Um, staff has received opposition from nearby property owners. The applicant did mail letters pursuant to the zoning regulations on 13 June and staff executed the notification process during August 2025. Staff mailed 18 notices, receiving two responses in opposition from nearby property owners. Staff also received an anonymous response in opposition, which was published with the meeting agenda on September the third. Based on statements in that, um, anonymous response, staff requested response data from the Cochise County Sheriff's Office. Between February and August of '25, there were 10 reported incidents at this address involving the subject property. Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket SU 2520, a special use authorization request to allow charitable service with a residential component. We are available for the commission's questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This is the time for the applicant's statement. Pastor Willhite, you have 10 minutes. Name an address, please.
Thank you. My name is Pastor Darryl Willhite of Crystal Light Ministries. My address is 8688 East Madera Drive in Sierra Vista, Arizona, 85650. We just want to state that Crystal Light Ministries is a 501(c)(3) organization whose mission is to reach out to the homeless, the have-nots, those that are walking the street without food, without shelter, without clothing. We teach the principles of the Word of God, uh, that will help a homeless person transform and transition into a productive member of society. I too myself come out of drug addiction. Uh, I lived nine years, uh, on the streets of Tucson, Arizona, and, and went into a recovery program and a Christian program that taught me a different way of life that I've, I've been able to transition into being a productive member of society. I try to teach those same principles to others. Uh, a normal day at, at, at Crystal Light Ministry starts with, uh, 8:00 AM morning prayer. Then we discuss, uh, uh, the transportation arrangements because we have some people there that, that work different jobs. Uh, we have other people there do fundraisers, do car washes and things of that nature. And so we set that schedule and get those things set up. Then we go into breakfast. After breakfast, we do chores. Then we do a short Bible study and then we begin our day. The facility is always manned, manned with somebody in the position of authority because there are times when I'm not in the facility myself, but I always have a second in command that has a helper that, uh, keeps things in order and direction. I've found that over the years, I've been doing this about 30 years, uh, when those come in that are not using drugs and alcohol, which are prohibited on the property, no drugs, no alcohol of any kind, um, and you have to comply with the structure. The structure is there for a reason. After you've been in there for a period of time, we also teach relapse prevention, which I believe is very vital to continuous, uh, society and production in life. It, it is our hope that, that you guys allow us to continue because what we do not only uh, helps the individual, but it also helps the community. Because now you don't have all these homeless people walking around, uh, causing problems and disturbances, uh, of all kinds. Um, we do have an, an association with law enforcement in the city. They have been out to the residence. I would, I would tell you that, uh, focus on that five of those, uh, uh, times that they came to the property, we were not even there. It were four, before we ever got there. We do use the po, police department and the sheriff's department, which I went in and met the captain of each of those departments. So they are in agreement to help us if we have trouble. At times we have, uh, clients come in that aren't conducive to our structure. And so we have to remove them and we put them in places that's more conducive, that fits them a little bit better. Sometimes they, they, they may cause confusion. So to deter that, we use law enforcement to be on the property as we remove them from the facility so we keep down any disturbances. I, I think that's a, a, a good way to, to overcome the disturbance, disturbances that might occur because somebody is not complying with wanting to leave or something like that. Like I said, I've been doing this for about 30 years. Uh, I teach principles of the Bible. I came off the street and, and I've been a minister for the last 30 years, always reaching out to, to the have-nots because I believe everybody should have an opportunity or a second chance to become productive in life. The principles of the Word of God will lead us to a different way of life, a different way of living that's conducive to having us change the decision process that we had into a righteous decision making process. I, I can, I can attest as, as, as a witness myself that, that, that I was in, uh, put in jail for a period of time. I was, uh, addicted to drugs and alcohol. I didn't have a home. But as I begin to apply the principles of the Word of God to my life, my, my life began to get better. And that's what we try to encourage and teach. As you learn the principles of the Word of God and you begin to let your application of life reflect the character of Jesus Christ, your life begins to get better. I can attest to that. Uh, God is real. He is in you and with you when you have faith and belief in Him and He guides and directs that all things work for the glory of good for those who love the Lord, who are called according to His purpose. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be in a hurry, uh, but there's really a lot to say about, uh, having a second chance at life. And I think those of us that are come out, that have come out of addiction and drugs and alcohol and jail, uh, that have had the experiences, were able to go back to where we came from and bring somebody else up by the Spirit of God. And that's what we focus on trying to do. I think that the community will become a better place as we begin to bring those people who are disenfranchised, uh, off the street and teach them different values and principles that make them productive in society. It'll help improve the conditions of our society. We, we work with various different organizations in the community. Uh, we're known all over the city. We, we provide food bags. We, we put people in hotels off the street. We pay people's light bills and phone bills and we pay their rent and we pull their cars out of the desert and we pay for repairs. out of the desert, and we pay for repairs on their vehicles that they can be productive in their lives. We do a plethora of different things throughout this ministry that not only help individuals, but that help our community as well. It's my hope that you guys grant me the opportunity to continue in this endeavor, that we continue to help improve our community in which we live in. I thank you for the opportunity to let me speak. I would bring your attention to Matthew 25, starting at verse 35 to verse 40. And the Word of God says, "For I was hungry, and you gave me meat; I was thirsty, and you gave me drink; I was a stranger, and you took me in naked, and you clothed me; I was sick, and you visited me; I was in prison, and you came unto me." Then shall the righteousness answer him, saying, "Lord, when saw we thee in hunger and fed thee, or thirsty and gave thee drink? When saw we thee, a stranger, and took thee in, or naked and clothed thee?" Verse 30, 39. "Or when saw we thee sick in prison and came unto thee?" And the king shall answer and say unto them, "Verily, I say unto you, in so much as ye have done it unto one of the least, one of the least of these, my brother, you have done it unto me." We try and follow that basic principle. I believe it's of humanity, love, grace, peace, and mercy, transforming downtrodden individuals into productive members of the society by the Word of God. Thank you for allowing me to share.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is the public hearing portion. This is the time for comments from other persons. I do have one request to speak. Francois Sullivan? Thank you. Come forward. Name an address, please. You have three minutes.
Francois Sullivan, 5278 South Ricardo Road. So we're directly adjacent to this property, and so I've been living at this property with my family since 1987, and so this is very new to me. We've always had families all around. Our kids went to the local school. My primary concern is safety. A few months back, after the individual purchased the property, we did experience noise and lots of fighting and yelling and cussing that we would hear when we were in the yard. That stopped after a while. I don't know what happened there, but also just security. I know it's not an assisted state-licensed facility, at least I'm not sure about that, but I know it takes a lot to put these assisted living places into place, and it's not just having one person, like as a helper, perhaps, when the gentleman is not there, but I'm really concerned about wandering the neighborhoods, and, you know, I commend the purpose of this, to give someone another chance. But right now, there are just so many questions about the impact, since there won't, at least to my understanding, it's not going to be like a structured state-licensed facility. So that's what I could probably get on board with, not to mention increased traffic and the well that we share, water, of course, everyone always says water, but, you know, we're the ones who take care of the well, and it's really hard to get people to pay for the water sometimes, especially new people coming in, you know, without having to go to court. And so far, we haven't had any major issues, but the well is getting old, going on 40 years, and so I look at that. The water pressure isn't always the best, so with more and more people coming in, and maybe their families as well, you know, we're dealing with the water, but mostly just increased, I don't know, waste, perhaps, you know, trash sitting out. But my main concern, really, aside from all that, is safety, since we've already had an issue there. Let's see. Also, how many employees would be there daily? So that's more of an impact. Will there be employees? How are you going to monitor these people, you know? And maybe nothing would happen, but maybe something tragic would happen. So that's where I'm coming from, just trying to, you know, protect the neighborhood and all of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online that wishes to speak to this item? Hearing none? Yes, sir. Five minutes, please.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify a few things. We are a structured 501(c)(3) organization. We are licensed by the Internal Revenue of the United States. We carry an EIN number, and we're sanctioned. We don't have confusion arguments. Part of the structure is you have to maintain a certain level of communication, okay? We don't use profanity. We watch Christian programming. We are reading the Bible on a regular basis. We have Bible studies continuously during the course of a week. Our focus, that's why I've removed those that aren't a fit for the structure, so everybody that lives there are in compliance with the structure and operating in a manner that's conducive to growth and maturity. So we don't have a lot of confusion there at all. It is normal to have somebody come to the facility at times that doesn't necessarily fit the structure. I'm a praying man. I pray quite a bit. God is able to give me discernment, so I can recognize when a person is not a fit, and I don't just throw that person back out in the street. I find a place that's conducive, that he fits, so I can move him to that place, okay? So it's not a battle, it's not a fight, it's not an argument, and I sit down and I talk with clients there. When they get there, we devise a plan, so there's definitely structure that's implemented and put in place. I live at the facility myself. I manned it every day. I make sure that it operates in a positive fashion, a positive manner at all times. I do have staff members. I usually, whoever is co-kept the facility, they have some authority when I'm not there, and then I have a director of the facility. So there's always some leadership there to make sure we operate in compliance at all times. We're not unlike any other facility that brings in somebody that's living in a negative fashion and trying to help them develop and grow, that they become productive. So you're going to have some incidences, but we limit that as much as we can. In that facility, there's very little disruption and argument. The principle of God tells us to love one another, okay? Tells us to love our brothers as ourselves, tells us to pray for those who despitefully abuse us. The Word of God is not with being violent or abusive in any way to anybody, and as they come in and learn on a daily basis, the character begins to transform to the likeness of Christ, who is love, grace, mercy, joy, peace, long-suffering, grace. I too am a little concerned with what the young lady said, but I want everybody to know that I'm concerned about safety more than anybody else. My gate locks. After 9:00 in the evening, you can't even enter the facility. Everything that's done is done inside of that residence, okay? There's nothing outside done. We're on a foric parcel, so even if some of us came out and walked recreationally, because their walking is good for you. I mean, the stars are beautiful, different times of year. At nighttime, it's beautiful. It's nice to be able to go out and go for a walk, okay? I just want anybody that lives in that area to know, you won't get anything violent or unsafe from anything or anybody on that residence. If I have the slightest inkling that there's somebody that's capable of that, I don't leave them there. That's a place of peace. That's holy ground, and everybody there complies with the structure and the rules of the facility.
The public hearing is now closed. This is the time for commission discussion. Does anyone have any questions?
Perhaps. I could think of one. Do you mind coming back up? Sir? Yes, sir. Thank you. I didn't catch in the presentation, that is the location that we're looking at, right?
Yes.
Okay. And do you...
The ramp is in the front of the house there. That's the front area. There's a dorm area to the left of that ramp, and that ramp actually leads into a dorm area.
Okay.
That dorm is the women's dorm. The other area is the men's dorm to the right side, and then the house is equipped with two other single-family bedrooms, three bathrooms, a living room, a kitchen of enormous size. We're getting help currently from different organizations. If you looked in our cupboards right now, there's food enough in there for a year right now.
Okay.
Okay? And it stays like that. In the facility, they don't want for anything. There's no reason for them to go out and do anything wrong, because everything they need is right there in the facility. We make sure of it. There's food, there's clothes, there's everything that you could think of that's necessary in a household is in that facility, okay? I just want everybody to know that there is an enormous amount of homeless people in our society. We are a facility that's trying to be instrumental into helping that situation improve, okay? And we govern that facility in a manner that there's nothing to fear about it. Everybody there wants to change their life, wants to do better. We just ensure that they do that. We find them jobs. If they don't have a job, we still bring them in. There's people in there that don't pay a dime, okay? What they do donate to the facility is just enough to keep the doors open. So we're not trying to make money. It's not about anything like that. It's about abling people to evolve to a state that they're productive in human life, that they make better choices.
Well, sir, would you say that is a work in progress, then, the facility?
It's continuously a work in progress.
Yeah, yeah.
Because people are constantly growing. We never get to a place where we know it all and we do it everything right. We're human beings. We're going to make mistakes, but the beauty is that when we make a mistake, we are able to recognize it, and there's somebody there to catch us when we fall and encourage us to get back up. That's the key. It's not about how many times you fall, it's about how many times you get back up.
If I get a couple of questions about that process, would you say, well, I don't know how people come to you or you find them. Do you go out looking for them, or what brings them in?
Various ways. Various ways. We have car washes. We take lunches around the city on Wednesday to the homeless, and so we meet a plethora of homeless. There's different agencies in the city that call me, because there's no way for an individual to go, and they know that if they come to Crystal Light Minist...
City officials from Sierra Vista sometimes call you?
The police department calls me. The sheriff's department calls me. Legacy Foundation calls me. St. Paul Missionary Baptist Church calls me. Generation House calls me. Hoop House calls me. I mean, there's a...
So you're well-known with all of those agencies?
I'm very well-known. I've been doing ministry in Sierra Vista for about 15 years. With the covering of St. Paul Missionary Baptist Church under Pastor Buck Buchanan, who's been here about 30 years.
Well, thank you for that. Do you, maybe just a couple of things. Would you say most of your clients, or how would you, what would you call them?
I would say you could call them clients, yes.
Are they mostly men, do you think?
No, it's a combination. There's just as many homeless, distraught women in our community as there is men. Homelessness doesn't know any race, creed, color, or gender.
Okay.
It's a question of decisions that you make that bring you there.
Yes, sir. I appreciate all of that. Forgive my questions if they're silly.
You're fine.
But do they bring, I mean, are dogs or pets an issue with you?
No, no. We don't allow pets. Some people are allergic to pets, pets are very dirty. That house has to be extremely clean. I'm a stickler about the cleanliness in that house. I do chores, we do chores every day, every morning.
Do you sometimes reject people that aren't going to fit?
Very, very rare. Like I say, I believe that everybody should have a chance. There are some conditions that I'm not medically capable of dealing with, okay? But I know people that can help, and so I refer them other places.
Okay. And then maybe one more or two more. Do most of them succeed with this? Are they...
I'll tell you, as an individual entity, the majority of people that come through Crystal Light Ministries are productive in their lives right now.
Okay.
Okay? But recoveries are funny, Adam. There's a nationwide percentage of people that get clean and stay clean for the rest of their lives, and it's very, very low. The best percentage in the country is Team Challenge, okay? And they're at 2.5% of the people that go through that. Then you got locked-in terror organization. I believe that Crystal Light Ministry is in that same vein. At one point in time, we had 120 adults and 37 children in one facility, and about 80% of them are clean today.
Okay. Well, surely you would understand, everybody would understand, maybe concerns that neighbors might have without knowing, and...
Well, we are no different than a single family. I come from a family of 10, and a mom and dad.
Me, too.
Okay? So we won't use any more water than any other family in the neighborhood. So as families move in, if you've got a large family, you can't live in a neighborhood, I mean, let's be real about it. When it comes to that, the water, the well, I personally paid every dime to have that well cleaned, and I've had it cleaned twice this year out of my own pocket, and I will do that to ensure that the water is safe, because when I bought the property, the water was not safe. I don't see how anybody didn't get sick, because the well hadn't been cleaned in two years, okay? So...
I guess I could go on with a lot, but I'll have one more question.
Amen.
The applicant proposes a maximum of 10 residents on a voluntary, temporary basis.
Right.
Do you ever have trouble removing people or getting them to move on?
Every now and then, and that's...
Do you have to call the police for that?
That's why I'm in a relationship with law enforcement in the area, because I'm not there to fight anybody. Nobody else is there to fight anybody. We don't want turmoil or confusion, and when law enforcement shows up, people suddenly get some act right.
Has there ever been, as far as you know, a problem with neighbors? Has there been any injury or combat or threats or any other issues?
No, no problems with neighbors. We rarely see neighbors, because like I say, everything at Crystal Light Ministry is done internally. We're inside the house.
Well, I thank you for your dedication.
Praise God.
I'm done with my questions.
Thank you guys for giving me an opportunity to share this evening. I appreciate it. God bless you all.
Thank you.
That'll be fair.
Mr. Limbach?
Uh, I was a, a federal parole officer for twenty-two years and visited hundreds of similar type facilities, um, both court sanctioned and private. And the majority of, of those occupants tend to be homeless, as the gentleman stated. And as he also acknowledged, uh, many of those have mental health and/or substance abuse issues, as evidenced by, uh, the law enforcement contact. I, I forgot how many times law enforcement came out. If it was ten times. But I do have sensitivity to the neighbors having to deal with those types of unknowns. And, uh, I personally don't believe that this is an appropriate neighborhood for that facility myself.
And that concludes my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have two questions for staff. Can, without going into details, could you tell me the dates of the police items you cited? Maybe the, the ending dates?
Uh, Madam Chair, you're talking about the, uh, law enforcement contacts at the property?
Yes.
I believe that, uh, Pastor Will Hyde acquired the property in late 2024. And we have, um, thirteen incidents, three of which are under one. So the first one was, um, March of twenty-five, March seventh. The most recent was August eighteenth of 2025. Um, and the, uh, Pastor Will Hyde was the initiating, uh, person on some of those contacts, um, presumably to require assistance with the residents. There has been criminal trespass, I believe, is the category that's used when that scenario occurs on the site. Disturbing the peace, um, complaints, disorderly conduct. Um, some of these incidents appear to have been probably in the roadway. Maybe it was somebody went out in the street and yelled. But there have been ten since March seventh to today.
Okay, that's very helpful. What about the dormitories? Do we have ALQ permits, or they're not required?
Thank you for that question, Madam Chair. Um, these are not boarding homes, and they're not assisted living facilities, so the State Department of Health Services would not let be the licensing agency. Uh, we would consider it to be a single-family residence. I think it would make sense possibly for a safety check to ensure that, um, each individual on the, within the facility itself has what we would identify as the minimum appropriate living square footage. I think that would be helpful. But as far as any ALQ, we would really consider it basically single-family residential with a voluntary group. When it gets back to the definite, the changing definition of a family that goes back to the nineteen eighties, we're all familiar with that. Um, so we would still consider it largely residential in nature.
They're bedrooms. He called them dormitories. They're just bedrooms for the family, apparently.
Correct.
Okay, that's good. Anything else?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Watkins?
I have a question of staff. Apparently, this has been going around for a while. Is this application complaint driven?
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Watkins, this application was precluded by a code compliance action based on a neighbor complaint.
Okay.
The complaint was for an unauthorized group quarter, um, which was specifically identified as an offender rehabilitation facility. Um, subsequent conversations with the applicant have disclosed that this is a voluntary basis, and the, and the residents are not there by any court order.
Right, they're just guests.
Correct.
Okay, uh, I do have a question for the applicant. What's the average person, how long do they stay?
That's a hard question to answer. Because I don't, I don't put a timeframe on it. Some people are able to go back into society sooner than others. And I watch and, 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 and have conversations and pray with each individual. When they feel like they can go out into society and maintain sobriety and continue to walk in the principles of which we teach, that's when they leave. I don't tell them, you gotta leave in ninety days. Some guys can do it in ninety days. Some guys can do it in six months. Some people take twenty-four months. And as long as you're willing to comply with the rules and guidelines and regulations of the program, I let you make the decision as to when you feel like you're, you're capable of leaving and able to function in a productive fashion.
A hard question to answer, so.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Mr.?
It wasn't, uh, real clear as to how many bedrooms you have in this facility?
I actually have five.
You have five?
I have five. We use three of the bedrooms for, for clients, okay? Then I have my bedroom, and I have a room that I, I put equipment in with my floor freezer for my meat.
So am I to, to understand then that you have ten residents beside yourself and whoever you have in the other bedroom?
Ten residents and myself. So I have, my dorms are set up where they can take three people each right now. Each of my bedrooms are set up where they can take two people, okay? And so I use two of the bedrooms, uh, for clients coming in. I use a bedroom for a leader, so he's got some privacy, and then I have three women in the women's dorm and three men in the men's dorm. And so that gives you my ten. Okay, the, the, my, my house is about three thousand square feet. So it's plenty big enough. It's plenty of room. It has three bathrooms. And if necessary, I allow, uh, clients to use my bathroom, because I have a bathroom in my room, a private bath. Okay, but I'm not, I, I'm not immune from telling somebody, go ahead and use my bathroom if you need. Okay, it's very rare that, 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 uh, people are even waiting for showers or baths, because of the, the schedule that some of people have in terms of their working hours. Uh, the schedule that we have when, when we do different functions, not everybody is always at the house at the same time. So it's plenty of opportunity for everybody, everybody to stay clean. We, we are very tidy. Cleanliness is next to godliness, so we make sure that we stay clean. Amen. It's not a problem. I appreciate the questions. I, I hope I've answered the questions where you guys have an understanding of what type of facility we are. Uh, the people there, I just want you to know that the people there have made a decision themselves. They're not court orders. There's, there's no kind of law governing in them to be there. They've made a decision that they want to do better in life. And that's a place where they can go to learn how to do better in life, and it's up their own volition. So that's why we, we have a peaceful facility with one big happy family. When it all comes, comes down to it, we're one family.
On an average, how many people do you have in a day at your facility?
What do you mean, how many people do I have?
Say over a period of a week, do you have, uh, is it full all the time, or do you have fewer?
It's not full all the time. It, it, it kind of goes in spurts. Sometimes, uh, we, we use a term that God is shaking the tree. Uh, and so we'll go through a spurt where, uh, like, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I removed three people. And it took about ten days for three people to come. So it, so it varies at times. I try and keep people as long as possible before they go back out into the community. So when, when there's a solid base of people, sometimes, on average, there's probably five people there. That's, that's, that's constant. And then the other five are, are, are going out and some new ones are coming in. But we, we pretty much keep a solid base. Half the houses has been there for a season usually. But again, like, like all recovery centers, um, it, it goes in spurts. It depends on the weather. Depends on the time of year. It depends on their availability to, to external help. There's a lot of factors that are involved. But most of the people that come in stay for a duration until they feel like they can function productively. Yeah, I answered the question.
One more.
Okay.
Uh, sir, Mr. Will, do you, do you own the house?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and then, um, people, is there like a large profit motive in this for you? Financial gain, uh, some kind?
No.
Yeah.
I, I'm retired. I'm military retired at eighty percent, and I get social security that's very good, because I had a good job when I worked.
Okay.
I used to sell cars to the two to thirty-five cars a month right here in Sierra Vista. I used to work for John Donovan. So I don't need anybody or any capital for any, from anybody in that house to pay every bill there. And I pay every bill there. Some people come there, they don't pay anything. I try to, this is about giving a person an opportunity to produce at a rate that he ultimately gets his own place to live, and he's able to support himself. So we have a plan. I structure a plan for every individual. I got a guy that works for a big old tire right now, and he makes almost nineteen dollars an hour. He pays me two fifty a month to live there. Okay, the rest of this money goes in a bank account. So in the next ninety days, he could possibly, uh, have a facility for him and a young lady playing some Mary. See, we, we, we're trying to give you a hand up. We're not trying to take you down. That's not about money. I couldn't care less about money. Jehovah Jehovah is my provider.
Appreciate that, and I'll be done with my questions there. Uh, what I'm seeing here, commissioners and everybody, is a need that everybody knows about. In Sierra Vista, you see these poor people all the time.
Yes.
They're troubled, they're homeless, they're sick. They come into my office constantly looking for help, or maybe just to swipe a handful of candy out of the jar. But they're out there, you know, we know they're out there, and I don't know what kind of help they're getting. Some don't seek it, they're not able, or whatever the problems are. But I see a gentleman in, in, in the community devoting himself to that problem at whatever level he can. And it, uh, may seem small, but by government standards, um, I just don't know what should, everybody complains about this. I don't know what's done about it. Mr. Will Hyde is doing everything he can about it, and I have to appreciate you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Anyone else? All right, let's close the public hearing portion. I'm sorry, now we close the commission discussion and ask Mr. Taylor for his recommendation.
Madam Chair, commissioners, based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends approval of DOCKET SU twenty-five twenty to allow a charitable service with a residential component housing up to ten persons, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the property shall not be used as a group quarter, offender rehab facility, custodial facility, or guest lodging. No rent, lease payment, or tenancy arrangement shall be charged or created for any individual utilizing the welfare charitable service. The operator may accept voluntary donations or nominal cost recovery contributions, for example, food or utilities, provided that such contributions are not a condition of lodging or services. Condition two, the county may revoke this permit upon verified violations of these conditions or documented adverse neighborhood impacts. Condition three, a responsible staff member or manager shall be present whenever guests are on site. Condition four, a fifteen-hundred gallon capacity septic system or larger is required, and that is a condition driven by our environmental health team comments. Standard conditions related to condition acceptance, permit timelines, and modifications apply to this request if the special use is approved by the commission. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve DOCKET SU twenty-five dash twenty. We'd like to now take the vote. Mr. Limbach?
Uh, I vote no, and I submit all my concerns expressed to the board previously.
Thank you. Mr. Montgomery?
I'm gonna vote yes to approve.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Fickett?
I'm gonna go vote no, because I really wouldn't want that in my neighborhood. I don't think that it's, uh, appropriate for a residential neighborhood where you have families living.
Thank you. Mr. Marzky? And Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Chair votes yes with reservations. I do wish you luck, Mr. Will Hyde.
Could you give us scorecard or nettes?
Yes, two, two no's. Six, yes, there's eight of us. Six yeses, two no's.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking. Any individual disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors within fifteen days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk at the office or online at cochiseaz.gov. Thank you. All right, DOCKET SU twenty-five dash twenty-two, Cactus View Lane, ALQ. Joshua and Tammy Drezak? Drezak, thank you, and thank you for being patient.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Could I get a motion to approve SU twenty-five dash twenty-two?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
I move to approve DOCKET SU twenty-five dash twenty-two with conditions of approval recommended by staff. The factors in favor of approval constituting the findings affect.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Watkins, thank you. Public hearing is now open. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you. Madam Chair, commissioners, this is the staff presentation for DOCKET SU twenty-five twenty-two. A special use authorization request to allow an accessory living quarter exceeding maximum allowed square footage. The applicants are Joshua and Tammy Drezak. The property is located at thirty-one fifty-four Cactus View Lane in Mescal. Tax parcel one two four zero two zero thirty-seven November. Property is RU four. Plan designations are rural. Current use is residential. The proposed use is residential. Property again is located in Mescal, approximately three miles west of Benson and a mile and a half north of I-ten. This property was created via survey in two thousand and six in an area with an existing rural residential development pattern. There's some drone images. This would be viewing to the northwest. This would be viewing to the southwest. That's the closest residence to this property to the right. And this would be viewing to the south. The current accessory living quarters, as the commission is aware, are about to change significantly. Um, however, the current, uh, requirements are the same as they have been. The commission has reviewed multiple ALQ requests over the last several years. Um, that text amendment was approved by the board on September second and will take effect thirty days from the date of adoption. Once in effect, the commission will no longer, um, be considering special uses for ALQs that exceed the development standards as far as size or height. That will fall under the purview of a board, of the Board of Adjustment through a variance process. So these current regulations now, um, they can be attached or detached. ALQs are allowed in rural districts anyway. The only reason the special use is required is because of the size of the structure. And again, the, summarizing the applicant's, uh, request, there's an existing, um, opt-out, opt-out residence on the site. Uh, the applicants do propose, uh, having a new fifteen-hundred sixty-eight square foot manufactured placed on the property, um, which will become the, um, and then the existing residence will become the ALQ, um, which is eight square feet over the maximum one thousand square foot. The applicant has, uh, supplied a site plan showing the existing, uh, site built structure that would become their accessory dwelling and the location of the new principal dwelling. Section two point four eight of the zoning regs identify ten factors to evaluate special use requests. Seven factors apply to this application. This request does comply with applicable factors. Accessory dwelling units are allowed by right rural zoning districts. Staff has not received any opposition from nearby property owners. The applicant's mailed letters is required by the zoning regs on fifteen July, and staff, uh, executed the public notification process during August of twenty twenty-five. Madam Chair and commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of DOCKET SU twenty-five twenty-two. A special use authorization request will now an ALQ. That exceeds maximum allowed square footage. We are available for the commission's questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This is the time for the applicant statement. This is the time for the applicant statement. If you'd like to come forward, you have 10 minutes. Name and address, please.
I'm Joshua Drezick and this is my wife Tammy. We live at 3154 West Cactus View Lane, Benson, Arizona, 85602, if you care. The, what, what we're trying to do is originally we were going to build a large barn dominium and we decided that since the kids were all gone, we didn't need a big barn dominium. Otherwise I wouldn't need this. But we decided to build just a small home for me and my wife. And then kind of unexpectedly, my daughter was retired, medically retired from the military. So now they're back with my two grandkids, which is great, except we don't have the square footage for it. So that's the reason that we've come forward is to provide square footage for my, my daughter, her husband, and my two grandchildren to, to live in the double wide. So it will become the primary residence on, on the property. I can answer any questions if anybody has any, but other than that, it's just a, it's just trying to get more family on the property.
Thanks. We may call you back. This is the time for comments from other persons. I do not have any requests to speak. Is there anyone online? Hearing none? The applicant would have a rebuttal time. Assuming you can waive that. Thank you. Public hearing then is closed. This is the time for commission discussion. Any questions?
Just one quick one.
Mr. Montgomery?
Correct. The photo we're looking at right now, are there two or three RVs of some type sitting up there?
Correct, there are right now. And two of those RVs will consequently be going away. We have plans to sell two of the, the two fifth wheels that are on the property.
Keep them, I'm just saying, is anybody living in them now?
Yes. Well, three of them are permitted and the fourth one is just a storage. It's just my camper. So nobody stays in that. But the three are permitted and we do have people staying in them.
Get your building done. You could get rid of those.
Exactly.
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
I'm sure. I don't have a question. I just have a comment. You know, we drive down the highway at 55. The cops give a slanty NC to 60 or whatever. Eight square feet. To me is a non-issue. I don't think we should be here.
We won't, again. I mean, this is going to go away.
Yeah. It's, yeah.
That's just my two cents worth.
That same thing, whatever.
Yeah, I think we all feel the same way about that. So I do have one question. I'm sorry to always nag on this. How do you have three permits for RVs?
Well, before my daughter moved back. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Drezick. This is for staff.
Oh.
Madam Chair, the, along with the opt-out permit, the applicant did request a temporary use permit for an RV.
One.
One. The code does require stays in RVs of up to 15 days.
Right.
So temporary occupancy of RVs is permissible?
More, more than one, again.
Two, correct.
Oh, okay. All right.
So.
Yeah, he's kind of, all right.
We're encouraged that most, if not all, the RVs will at some point be removed.
Yes. So, so the plan is to sell two of them and bring in your double wide? It sounds like we're going in the right direction. All right, anything else?
Oh, good.
Mr. Taylor, your recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends approval of docket SU 2522 to allow 1,008 square foot accessory living quarter with the following conditions, and these are the standard conditions relative to permitting, acceptance of conditions and modifications to an approved special use. Thank you, Madam Chair.
We have a motion to approve SU 25-22. Mr. Limbach, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes, aye to approve.
Mr. Watkins?
I think you already know my, my aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Marzky?
Aye.
And Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Wish you luck on your renewed family numbers. An individual disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors within 15 days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk at the office or at cochiezaz.gov.
May get the patience of the night.
Yeah, I told them that in the lobby. All right, docket SU 25-23, Gasco Marijuana Establishment. This item has been withdrawn by the applicant. Can I get a motion to remove it from the agenda?
Tell me.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? No, hearing none. Did I just undo your presentation? Are we good to go?
Next item.
Go ahead, Ms. McLachlan.
Thank you. Good evening. This is docket R 2504. It is a staff initiated text amendment to the zoning regulations specifically impacting appeals of special use authorizations. And here's a sample motion to open the public hearing.
Can I get, get this motion?
That motion right there? Well, I'll just take a crack at it then, Madam Chair. I move to recommend approval of docket R 25-04 to the Board of Supervisors, amending text of the Cochise County zoning regulations as outlined in Exhibit A.
Second? Mr. Watkins, thank you. All right, your report, Ms. McLachlan.
Thank you. The board is very familiar with special use authorizations. We heard several tonight. And as you are aware, the decision of the commission is final unless appealed. All appeals are considered by the Board of Supervisors. For the zoning regulations, the board may affirm, reverse, or modify the decision of this commission. This amendment would introduce a remand option with clear criteria and single cycle limitation, ensuring the board may return a case to the commission once per appeal. It applies to the following criteria to the remand decision. Additional evidence or testimony is necessary for a proper decision, or if new information has been submitted that was not reasonably available at the time of the planning commission hearing. So this is basically the process. A special use starts with the commission. If appealed, it goes to the Board of Supervisors. If they find new information introduced or is needed, they can take action to remand to a date certain back to this commission. The commission would consider the request, including any new information, and provide a recommendation to the board. The board would then take the final action to affirm, reverse, or modify the decision of the commission. Staff feels applicants and/or affected parties would benefit from a structured process that allows late arriving, relevant evidence to be considered without bypassing due process. Overall, the option is intended to improve transparency and fairness of county decision making. This concludes my presentation. This item will be considered by the Board of Supervisors on 9/16, next Tuesday. I have not received any public input on this. However, this is a public hearing. I'm serving as the applicant and I'm available for any questions. And there is, again, a sample motion on the screen.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Just for clarity, one, does this require the Board of Supervisors to remand?
No, it's just an additional option.
Okay. Could the applicant themselves ask for a second chance without going through the supervisors?
No.
Okay. So the supervisors do have to approve?
Yes. They'll just be provided one additional option.
Okay. Thank you.
Does everyone else understand this? I think this is well thought out. I think it's going to really help. I just hope it doesn't happen too often. All right, we have the motion on the floor for, to approve R 25-04. Like to take a vote. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye to approve.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Marzky? And Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
This motion passes? And you said the amendment will go before the board on September?
The 16th, Tuesday.
Thank you.
This is what we talked about.
This is what we talked about before and that's why I say I think it's great.
Yep.
All right. So is it time for the planning director's report?
Yes. Well, on Tuesday, in addition to this item, we'll have an appointment of a new commission member. It's Mr. Frank Ambrose. So he will be present at the next meeting. And this is again for District 2. On September the 2nd, the, yeah. Not at this time. So we should have, again, a full commission. On the 2nd, the ADU text amendment was approved by the Board of Supervisors. It'll go into effect on October 2nd. Rezoning 2507 was withdrawn. That was within the port of entry by the applicant. RZ 2509, 10, and 11 were all approved, which was a recommendation of the commission. Let's see. On the 7th, the board will consider rezoning 2512 and 13, which you guys heard tonight, and recommended approval. On the 8th, our next meeting, we'll have five items. We have the subdivision that was tabled again. We'll have a special use for contract construction services, one for container sales, one for combined solar and data service center, and then a down zoning in the sun sites area. We did get an appeal of a special use for the wild horse, wild horse special use from the last meeting. That will go before the Board of Supervisors on October 21st.
So that will be available for the remand?
Yes.
Thanks.
And yeah, that's all we got.
Okay, thank you. I have one request. If this slows down, if we get a fall, fall lull, can we talk about the notification radiuses? How you make decisions, how to send public notices out? Just, just a review. Anything by any other commissioners?
I will be gone next meeting, so have fun.